Yeah, it's all something wrong with Sarah.
It's like, you know, it's just...
So, close.
Sup, player.
I don't know where I'm sitting. You know, sit somewhere else, halfway.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I got a friend at church that I like. Thanks. Is okay if I sit here?
How are you?
Today? Not right now, but it's nice to be here.
Boardman.
But they shut them down. That's how I'm doing.
This is going beautiful.
Cheers.
Okay. No, wait, sir. See, I already...
Yeah, yeah.
Just to cut it.
It's great. It springs even forward. Especially during football season. Yeah, the hot air out of this.
Play us.
It's all Texas.
It's so spotty.
So, the other part, you know, Kim, these are the nights.
And that's hot.
Oh, for your friend there.
So, I was, what is, I need to know. That means you're trying to point the words and... It's like, uh... And then, it only gets worse. I will be wanting... When they're sixteen and eighteen, guess what they want to watch?
Like, the same things I want to watch?
Yeah. Yeah, we were growing up, they didn't have that much.
It wasn't easy.
Well, it's like a little bit of a portion. And Trace said my boys really don't like stuff. So, do you need to do some really hard...
I just bet it.
Yes.
I'm looking, I'm looking forward to this one.
Wonderful wife, so my daughter's second grade teacher. Okay, we're gonna go to second grade teacher for one year.
Should I say photography?
Yeah, Owen and Ellen.
My friends are very talented. Is anybody else on the stage? This is a school board. Yeah. Yeah, so it's, uh... So, that's enough. I am dressing up. What about you guys?
So, why are you, well, we just took... I put this in the office. I want to be down there by the way.
Sounds like we all want to be first and then grab a train. That's fun. Well, just make sure.
I know. It's kind of...
Really trouble.
Yeah, that's kind of over the roles. You two have... Yeah, we got a link to register.
Oh, we did that?
Yeah.
We just got this paper.
No, like, email? But you weren't registered. Oh, like, so maybe that's right.
I like...
She's out, so she's out in the next place. It's so good. Yeah. I think they spent a lot of time on you, but it's good. Yeah, if you know, when I asked, I mean, like, for instance, David, I asked our college. I really mean, unless you happen to be three or four times a week, and then I can avoid patient activity. Yeah. It's better than... But she's still part of the... On that every time. You say Elliot, Josh, and Paul, so you're starting to care about him. He's such a gentleman because he's spending time together. And he's always like, nice job, Elliot. Call it that. You call it.
This is as waterfall and... This one.
Could not... I swear to God.
Yes, yes.
She had all the kids for the life. She's now a G B A S. Yeah, this is... Yeah, I think it's great. We can figure out how to leave.
That's what. Yeah, get your texts in, I thought. Sorry, I didn't respond here. I'll sleep. You know, you know my...
I'm sorry, you should say something.
That's awesome.
They won't know about it.
You're gone next week?
No.
The weekend after?
Eighteen. We still got the baby.
Well, she's that eventually. I don't know.
One, just one is one.
So, maybe you want to be a duo in my way.
But this is all my...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how that would play out. It was like... So much. I would think it would...
March with the thigh.
March with the thigh. Hello. David should try to come for two mornings with Elliot from New York. To school, I have you. Okay, tell me. They do Friday. Their first day of New York. Never provide prices. So, it's a really funny part because I find it right out of the gate, I can actually see it. It's just like, there is yourself in it. Do carpool.
It's not about the others. You know carpool?
No, we carpool. Oh, yeah, no. I drive like once a week, which is perfect, but like, there's been the time that I had to be there for something.
I mean, Sam had made a chart for me.
Oh.
And he has four quadrants and it's line, line, line. He told me I need to...
Okay, for that, I can't get him to read one book. I was supposed to get him reading four times, four books, three nights. I don't know, today's the first day he's from all books.
All games, six to eight years.
I don't think so.
I don't know, on Saturday.
I think it's up for the clarification.
That was though, like a...
I know.
Just waiting.
Check, I see, yep, I'm gonna wait to see. Alright. Would you use to do?
Yeah, yeah.
What is this?
Six words. It's around sound for...
Now, how do I... Can we like jog and...
Boiler's not winning. Boiler's not winning. We have a fire boiler.
Just turn that off.
So... There's no air.
We have everybody?
Yeah. We're bringing around.
Behind. We're calling the meeting in order, we can't wait to go call.
Wendy Carley here, Joe Goff.
Here.
Chris Guyer.
Here.
Kenny Casimir here, into the little pass here, Sandra Rakers.
Here.
Here. Everyone rise. Plagued leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, for the nation under God, in this hall with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, and this is our second committee of the whole meeting, a different setup tonight, just kind of, I kind of like it, feels good so far. I have, I have to, I have to, I'm going to share with you guys, because, you know, we're going to talk about a long range for some of this, we're going to try to do everything along, but I, I like numbers in line. And as Dr. Harris knows, uh, he's been fighting the cardinal thing. I thought we were playing a game on Wednesday night, and, you know, I'm driving around between meetings today, listening to the radio, and I heard a couple of fun math problems. The game tomorrow night, the first pitch is at seven oh eight, you can share this with all your friends who comes to playoff game. Seven oh eight first pitch, right, in military time, what is that? Nineteen oh eight. When was the last time you went to World Series? Nineteen oh eight. Right now, you could put that together with, you know, as I reminded Dr. Harris, the batch of future moves predicted the Cubs would win the World Series in twenty fifteen. So you put those two together, now, you add one more, the date tomorrow is October seventh, right, which if you were to write it numerically would be ten seven. A hundred and seven, which is a hundred and seven years since nineteen oh eight. All signed, pointing to destiny. The Cubs are a team of destiny.
Cub fans have a lot of time on their hands. That's all I know.
Hundred and seven years.
That's all I know. As a Cardinal fan, it'll just be number twelve, that's where I live.
This problem we have, Cardinals. Okay, so let's, let's jump into our.
About football.
Yeah. From the pack of men, that's a number. We do, we got a little problem, pack or Cardinal fan.
I have to do better than screen.
We have to make this a really fun, sound recording. Okay, uh, we've got a few discussion, a couple of discussions before we get to our facilities. So let's talk, instead of talk about our legislative priorities, um, there was a draft attached, um, and I know that there was a group that was at the board members' work at breakfast this morning. Um, first of all, just any quick report of the breakfast? Everybody want to say anything?
Well, I can, I'll comment, um, you know, there's several board members who are there this morning, and the ones who were able to be there, uh, obviously, an early morning meeting with our legislators is always, uh, uh, it was well attended, and it was good, and we, we were able to have four of our legislators there. Um, one of them had to leave pretty quickly, um, Representative McSweeney, and Pam Althoff, who's also a senator, used to be in our area, but she came and was, I thought, very, um, helpful in, in some of the dialogue. Uh, Representative Morrison and Representative Sullivan were there the whole time, and, uh, it was good to hear from them, and had lots of dialogue. If, I believe, it was a great opportunity as a combination with the Chamber of Barrington Area, Chamber of Congress, and Bay Cog, uh, together, along with School District, you know, two twenty, and we, we did a joint legislative session at, um, I think it was real value, uh, for the entire community that goes there, probably seventy-five, eighty people, tell them the total was seventy-five, wasn't a hundred? Was it a hundred? Okay. Um, it was, it was well attended, and it was great to share the school district's perspective on some of the legislative and the budgetary issues. Um, I thought the, uh, conversation was, was good, and, uh, the unfortunate thing, Springfield sits in, in grinlock right now, and with no budget, and the budget certainly dominated the conversation this morning, so. I was, you know, they're frustrated too, and, uh, I know the leadership of the governor's office, uh, you know, are, um, not moving, so we hope at some point that the state will have a budget, and, uh, I can say I hope so too, and, and we get to some resolution. So I don't know, if any of the learners were there, want to comment?
Yeah, I just, I know that we talked about on the legislative committee about having a joint legislative breakfast with the other groups, and I think it worked really well, I think the attendance was so much higher, um, by the legislators and the attendees, that if we have an opportunity to do this again in the future, I would definitely consider that. Um, I was impressed with the questions that the audience asked and the answers that the legislators gave, um, but, I mean, I don't think anything came as a big surprise to any of us, you know, I think, uh, funding in Springfield will continue to be questionable, and, um, you know, the state of financial affairs, the state of Illinois are not good in not getting any better anytime soon, um, but it was a good breakfast, and I thought it was a really good meeting.
I was, I was impressed with the, uh, representatives that showed up, I thought that they were well spoken and pretty drastic issues, there's a lot of discussion about petition, uh, you know, payments reform, all kinds of, uh, different aspects of that in all the different sectors, so, but I think it just reinforced everything that we, as a board continually talk about, which is, there's a lot of uncertainty, there's, uh, potential cuts, and, you know, I think that that's something that we always use in, you know, the back of our heads as board members when we're making decisions.
But you're right, as we do our long-term planning with our budget, uh, not only for each fiscal year, but in the big picture, it's, it's very, very difficult to have any consistency when it comes to dollars from the state, we just don't know. As we've been through some very difficult times in the last several years, I see no change in the horizon, um, it's going to continue to be a challenge.
Did, um, we had a draft of kind of our legislative priorities, is to be secure now in October twenty fifteen. Was there anything you guys heard or experienced this morning that would cause you to modify any of this in the draft? So, you know, if you go through this, we support equalizing the state funding, uh, the whole harmless general state aid, they did try to keep, you know, school funding levels in a, in a baseline for any funding, we're okay with that. Relaxing state mandates to allow more latitude, they're administering local programs, you know, where we, you know, cite bus transportation, driver's ed, daily physical ed, uh, we okay with that still? Legislation that allows school districts to under levy while retaining the ability for future boards to recapture the ability to under levy in subsequent years, um, you know, it's interesting, it hasn't, it hasn't been a focus of legislation lately, maybe it should be.
No, there was no discussion around that at all, but it's something that I think we should ask for, give the board's latitude then.
We state we could challenge the premise of shifting the TRS funding to local districts, uh, obviously, that could create a lot of issues, particularly stuff done well, we're talking about the hard cap in here, uh, I guess still feels good everyone? We also believe adopting capital expenditure legislations, uh, to improve school security and student safety. You know, I have to tell you, this is gaining more and more traction, I think, even with some legislators being able to, because I think they understand that current state funding doesn't really allow, and it's not equitable, um, you know, when the PTO was put in place, it created a situation, a little less.
There was not a favorable response this morning to this topic.
No, really?
Yeah, he said, I think one of the legislators said specifically, if we had enough funding to keep social services where they are, then we might consider, you know, capital improvements, which, that's the position they're in right now, they're cutting service, social services to.
But I think the, the solution isn't necessarily, um, for the state to pay for, but to allow local communities to pay for it outside the cap. That's the typical solution.
We didn't get into that level of detail.
Yeah.
But I think they were hesitant for any type of an increase, so, so there was no appetite for any increases.
But this is a problem, is we, we've got, we have schools that are not keeping up, I mean, we're lucky enough, for most of our schools, you know, we're, we're top, but our schools aren't die or leave, we've got a lot of school districts that are strong, I mean, you can just look at a neighborhood school that's prepared in their ten-year plan, had a hundred and twenty-five million dollars of stuff, they had it in five years. Right, that's a, that's a pretty big hole to get out, and I think it's indicative of a lot of schools, and, and even we're a little sweet sometimes.
The one thing that I caught that Sullivan said was that, they have, each of them have a small amount of discretion, and what's small is, I'm not sure, but that he had directed some of that money to some of his school districts, and so maybe it would be worth us having a conversation with some people that are more invested in their district two twenty better, and asking them what type of flexibility they might have.
Especially when we get that updated life safety report that's going to be coming soon, we'll have some new opportunities to discuss.
I mean, that was new information to me, I didn't realize that they might have some. I agree, and I thought, you know, and that'll be the next task for our legislative committee, go talk to some of our groups about that, because that was very interesting.
I heard him say that today, I didn't know it, I don't know how much, I, I.
But it'd be worth thinking about, something, but.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, we, we've captured, you know, it's ongoing frustration, we have the speeds of traffic control, we don't have more schools, falls, it's camera, we just can't get, we feel are adequate solutions. Do you have a chance to ask them this morning about this? Uh, I think we still believe, right, the board is still a priority for ops, trying to figure this out, particularly around countryside and repair, we need a little bit of that op.
I still don't like it.
No, we are.
Well, they're approval. I don't know how we can get that changed.
Well, now, remember, some changes are coming next summer, right?
So here it is, next summer.
Right.
It's going to be a little fifty, kids are on your shoulder.
Well, that's.
It's.
So, one thing we heard a lot about this morning was the possibility of a property tax freeze, and I know we have hold harmless in here, it relates to general state aid, but that was a message that I think Brian tried to make to them, uh, you know, is it worth incorporating something like that, about our concern about that? Our concern about it not.
What, against the property taxes?
Not necessarily against it, but against, um, our concern about, or we support hold harmless, um, something hold harmless in relationship to that. We talked to the mandates for one thing, and I know you've got mandates in here, under a little bit of a different idea.
You have a hold harmless related to the property tax freeze?
Such as, if you're not going to allow, if you're going to make, have property tax freeze, you loosen the grip on some other mandates.
They actually brought that up, remember, a couple of legislators, they, they said we have to free up your ability to deal with that, can't just freeze your.
That's, that's the, that's the collective argument, just.
Yeah.
That's their answer for that.
Well, they, they referenced the mandates too. I wondered about the mandates.
We have mandates.
We do have separate, I know.
Related. It has a different relationship, but if you feel, if you, if everyone feels recovered on this, it's fine. I think the hold harmless is, is written here, relates to the distribution of funds.
Yeah.
General state aid.
Right, but you're right, it doesn't address any of our property tax. We don't have anything in here.
And really, with regards to that, is, I think our, our reference to the mandates is really the only reference.
You guys want to add something to, about property tax freezes in here? Yeah, because I mean, there's, there's, there's two good arguments that they're proposing, I'm not sure what the right answer is.
The position I would just, you know, I would, you know, suggest the board, if you're going to do something with property tax freezes, because it is a, you know, uh, divisive issue, we'll put it that way, that I would suggest that if, if, if the property tax freeze, something like this, should not be, we would not support it unless it's part of a larger comprehensive funding, you know, uh, something like that. In other words, if it's done in isolation without something else attached to it, that is wrong for us, that makes sense. It's got to be part of a larger comprehensive funding change or reform around how schools are funded in Illinois, then certainly the property free, pet tax freeze can make sense, that would be my suggestion from our standpoint, in other words, you gotta be careful on that, that's all I'm saying. Not support it in isolation, without considerations for reforming the educational funding mechanisms instead.
I, I guess I would, I was looking at it from a different direction, in that we support having districts still be able to, and I'm using that hold harmless thing, you know, function if there is a property tax freeze. It's probably a more eloquent.
I'd be careful.
I don't want to say that.
Well, maybe this is enough. Is there a statement we could make with, with that second board, with the state mandates?
I think the mandates, even though it's beyond a property tax.
You know, maybe it's a little bit to the end. Yeah, the property tax is so complicated, because it's not, it's, it's not about the property tax freeze, it's about, it's a property tax freeze and something else, and it's what that something else is. Right, in some cases, you'd say, yeah, that's, that's reasonable compromise, right, in other cases, you'd say, no, I think it makes no sense.
So you think since it hasn't been clearly defined yet, we might just want to stay where you are?
I think we have to.
We did, there was a lot of talk about it this morning, you didn't want to let it go unmentioned.
I guess it gets at some of the complexity that people, even folks in Springfield, that probably hash out, right, because there's so many moving parts that have a lot of consequences intended and other things. Okay, what else, is there anything else you guys want to consider putting on this list of priorities? You guys okay moving this forward as an action item, next meeting? Well, yeah, well, no, it's fair, how long is, I forget, how long is the five essentials?
Fifteen minutes, that's how much conversation we have.
So let me ask you a question, I, there's some folks here, um, I was going to try to put public comment right before we get into the facilities conversation, my guess is that's probably what most of the public comment needs to be, is there anybody that wants to make a public comment either now because they need to get out of here, or on something other than facilities? If you want to make a public comment, you can wait another fifteen minutes until we jump into facilities? Thanks. Let's do the five essentials.
The, tonight, we would like to spend a few minutes, um, updating the board on the five essential survey, and, um, we have a brief presentation here as an overview of the survey itself. Uh, if you remember correctly, that this survey is required by the state of Illinois as part of our waiver from NCLP and the federal government, uh, we are required to do this, every school district is, on an every other year basis. So we did implement this survey to, uh, this past spring, and Jeff's going to explain some of the, uh, results, preliminary results, now that the data for this will all come out to the, uh, public, the community, until our school report card is released, which, we don't know when that's going to be, because of the park results, which we have not received back yet, so, um, but, when it is released, then these results will be part of it. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff and let him walk through some of the details, and we'll certainly have plans for questions and comments.
Thanks, Dr. Harris, if you don't mind, I'll stand here and speak, so let's just review very quickly, uh. So let's just review very quickly how many people participated in the survey, which was administered in the spring of 2015. This was actually the second year that we have given the survey in our schools during the third year that it's been given in the state. You're only required to get the survey every other year. So we first participated in 2015 and then again last spring in 2015. So the survey is administered to all students or as many students as possible in grades six through 12. We have 84% of our total student population in our middle schools and our high school that did participate in the survey. We actually have to structure time during the school day for the students to participate in the survey to make sure that we meet the minimum threshold. 83% of our certified staff participated in the survey. The survey is only available to our certified staff, not to all staff. The state rather says that this is a survey for teachers because there are aspects of it that pertain specifically to the instructional environment. So they would prefer that only teachers participate in the survey. And then we make it available to all of our parents. And we had 11% of our parent population that participated in the survey as well. So as Dr. Harris said, the survey will, the results of the survey will be July sometime we think the end of this month or early November as a part of the state's interactive report card that is released on every school district in the state. So I thought the best overview that we could provide, that would give you a snapshot of the survey to better understand it, is this video that's provided by my essentials.
Five Essentials is an evidence-based system designed to drive improvement in schools nationwide. The Five Essential System reliably measures organizational changes and indicates the probability for school success through its survey and reporting tool. The Five Essential Survey is administered entirely online and is designed for students in grades six through 12 and all teachers. The Five Essential System is based on over 20 years of research conducted at the University of Chicago on what makes schools successful. The research identified a set of five comprehensive factors that are key to school improvement. First, there's effective leaders. The principal works with teachers to implement a shared vision for the school. Then there's collaborative teachers. Teachers work together to promote professional growth. Next is involved families. The entire school staff attempts to build external relationships connected to the school. Then there's supportive environment. A school is safe and supportive of students, teachers, and families. And finally, there's ambitious instruction. A teacher's instruction is clear, engaging, and academically challenging for students. These are the five essentials. Once your school has completed the five essential survey and the data is collected, cleaned, and analyzed, a five essential report will be generated for your school. This online report provides a detailed look at your school's current strengths and areas in which you can be improved. Five Essentials provides a robust lens that looks deeply into the organizational culture and learning environment of the school.
So that's a quick excerpt from their overview video. So just as a real succinct summary, the survey is research-based. It was first developed based upon norms according to how parents, students, and staff in Chicago Public Schools responded to the survey. It was created by the University of Chicago. So originally, when the survey was administered beginning in 2013, those norms were completely based upon responses in CPS. But then as the survey has been administered in, throughout the state and in all school districts in Illinois, those norms have been rewritten and recreated. So now they're based upon all of the schools across the state. Its objectives are to improve schools, to measure change, to indicate the probability of success. And as we've mentioned, it's given to all schools in the district, but only students in grades six through 12, and it's administered every other year. So we're going to look at the five areas of the survey. And we're not going to do a deep dive on these necessarily, but just to help you better understand what each of the five essentials measures. The first is leadership. And it looks specifically at the principal, how the principal works with teachers to create an instructional environment in the school. And there are certain indices that are measured in the survey itself. All right? So the second one is collaborative teachers. And with teachers, it looks at how, how committed the staff is to the school and to providing a rigorous instructional environment. And again, there are certain indices as well, collaborative practices being among those, the quality of professional development, all the ways that teachers engage in the instructional practice. Third is involved families. And this is the one, of course, where we're very interested in how parents respond to the survey. We want to measure how the school builds connections with the community to involve them in the learning climate. And the indices that it looks there are trust between parents and teachers, parents' involvement in the school, and of course, the parents' influence on decisions at the school. Now, the next two are very interesting because the survey is called five essentials. But actually, the fourth one, the supportive environment, is one and only what students can respond to. So in the survey itself, parents and staff cannot respond to questions related to how supportive the school environment is. In this case, students are asked, those students in grades six through 12 are asked how committed the staff is to supporting them in the school. Does the staff go out of its way to build relationships with students? And some of the indices that you can see there. Safety, of course, is one of these, how safe students feel at school. So that's one that parents, of course, are very interested in, but in this case, only students can respond to questions related to that. And the fifth and final one is ambitious instruction. And again, this is an area that only students can respond to on the survey. Asking whether classes are academically challenging, whether they feel challenged in specific courses such as English and math. And you can see some of the indices listed on the screen there. Now, what you're seeing here in the responses to the survey, the visual depiction of how a school district does in the survey are indicated by the colors on the chart. The darker the color, the darker the blue, the higher the performance according to the norms of the survey. So these are our actual results. Based upon our survey results, we had our highest ranking from students in the ambitious instruction environment. The next two, supportive environment, involved families, and then you can see effective leaders and collaborative teachers were just below those. So these are our actual results on the survey. This is how they'll be visually depicted when people can see the survey online in just a few weeks. Now, some things to keep in mind. First of all, our results are normed against benchmark school districts. And according to the state, those school districts that are benchmarked or compared to us, those that would be in our reference group, are similar in enrollment or population, the grade levels that we service, and our socioeconomic. Socioeconomics is primarily free and reduced lunch, the percentage of our population, those students that receive free and reduced lunch. We do not know what school districts are in our reference group. We have no idea what other school districts in the state that we are benchmarked against. We do know that there are no school districts that are necessarily in our benchmark group that are similar to us in academic performance. Three major indicators are those that are determined and how school districts are referenced to us are with regard to enrollment, grade level, and socioeconomic. So any school district in the state that would have a similar sized population, similar socioeconomic, or similar grade level service might be in our benchmark group. So all the norms that we'll see throughout the survey are based upon sort of an anonymous group of reference school districts. Secondly, as we mentioned before, only students in grades six through 12 participate in the survey. And only, the only two areas that students can rate the school district on are ambitious instruction and supportive environment. So for example, here again is our results as a district. This is a sample elementary school. This is actually one of our elementaries compared to us. So you can see they have no results for supportive environment and ambitious instruction because none of the students in an elementary school would have participated in questions regarding those two areas on the survey. So in a sense, it's the three essential survey for our elementary schools. It's not the five essentials. And the only three areas that our elementary schools will be rated on will be effective leaders, collaborative teachers, and involved families. Whereas at the district level, you'll see colors there for all five of those areas for us because students in grades six through 12 participated in questions pertaining to those two areas. And then, as we said, an individual report will be generated for each school. So while we're looking at district responses here, you'll actually be able to see all of our schools and their individual reports when it's posted online as part of the interactive report card in just a few weeks. So let's do a quick look at individual questions because I think this is probably the best indicator of how our schools and our school district is performing. Because they're probably the most insightful. What we saw in those colors there are based upon norms. Whereas when you look at the individual questions, we're actually seeing the percentage of teachers, students, and staff that responded to particular questions. So here are just some examples. All right, here's a question from the survey that talks about school commitment. And you can see, these are norms again, that we're in the average implementation range here. So we had a 57, that's an aggregate score, compared to all other school districts in Illinois that are in our benchmark group, which had a 50. Now, on the surface, that doesn't seem too impressive. We would much rather be in these darker colors here, which indicate higher performance or greater implementation. So again, these are normed responses and these are aggregates based upon the norm. But probably the better representation of how our district is doing will be on the individual questions that are within these categories. So let's take a look at some of those, for example. You can see this, these are two sub-questions from within this, this measurement of school commitment. And the question here, I usually look forward to each working day at this school. Well, 95% of our staff either agreed or strongly agreed with that question. But yet, the response to that question went into our norm score here, which placed us in this category compared to all other school districts that are in our benchmark group. And one thing to keep in mind is when you look at this, parents are typically, parents, students, and staff are typically very satisfied with their local school. So that's a reflection of that local satisfaction. That's how we compare to all other schools in the state within our benchmark group who are probably equally satisfied with their local school. But yet, when you look at the individual questions, that would seem to indicate a much higher level of satisfaction on the local. Here's another question. I feel loyal to this school. Again, 95% of respondents either agreed or strongly agreed with that question. So there appears to be some incongruity, but what you're looking at here is percentage responses to a question versus a norm score. Let's look at another example. This one is addressing the issue of program coherence. All right, again, we were in that average implementation range, a norm score of 57 versus 51, all the school districts that are in our benchmark group across the state of Illinois. Yet if you look at a question within that, you have 86% either agreed or strongly agreed with the, with the statement, there is consistency in curriculum instruction and learning at our school. So this, these individual questions will probably give us a much greater snapshot of how our schools are performing and how people in our communities feel about our schools versus these norm scores that compares to sort of an anonymous benchmark group across the state. So that's a real quick look at the five essential survey. Later this month, when the full reports are made available, those will certainly be available to the Board of Education as well. We believe that the total comprehensive report that looks at all of our schools, every question, how each of our schools are performing individually, is probably somewhere in excess of 200 pages based upon what we've seen previously. So that will be available later this month, and all of that data will be available online for people to review and make their own comparisons when they see it as a part of the interactive report card.
Questions from the board or comments. I'm not sure if, you know, in the past, this is the second time we've taken this, a couple of years ago. We felt like it was important to explain some of the details, some of the norm changes that when it was initially given. But we wanted to do this preview prior to showing up on the report card, going out to all of our parents and students and making sure the board understood what the information is said. One other key aspect is each of our building's principals and staff get their results back. And they use it as part of their school improvement efforts. It is, it's one piece of descriptive data that they're used to help guide decisions when it comes to school improvement and development. So that is the intent of it. That's the intent, you know, from the state to the federal level as well. And it certainly serves that purpose. However, it is an important piece of information. So what questions do you have? Anything to clarify or comments that would be helpful before this comes up?
Jeff, I don't know if I, I missed it, but do they, are they going to let us know who this anonymous benchmark group is or is that, did that escape me here? I mean, it makes, it would make the data much more useful if we knew a little bit more of that information.
Based upon what we have seen so far, and we've looked at all of the information that's available to us online before the full interactive report card is available, there's nowhere that we can find what school districts are in our benchmark comparison group.
I thought I heard you say that. I just wanted to clarify. I only had, you know, gone through all these groups.
My understanding, they probably will not release that. And I remember this in the past because it's the whole integrity piece with the statisticians and the data people at the University of Chicago. They're not going to release those districts. I, I do not believe they will. I know when I've done survey data in the past, I have seen that, whether it's been a local community survey, I've seen that. And I guarantee you, in this type of a large-scale survey, they probably will not release those, those details. Just my guess.
One of, one of the groups that were pulled were parents, 11%. Do you know how that compares to any, any other district that took the survey? Is it high, low? Is it the average? It seems so low.
We haven't seen other districts' information yet that's not available to us. That is consistent, I think, with the percent of parents that we had responded to the survey in 2013.
We, you had to have 10%, right, before it was?
Yeah, that was the minimum threshold. So if you didn't exceed 10% of response, or 10% of that population, then you would have basically a blank response on your survey.
And that's what happened to us last year.
Well, we actually have some schools that it will be blank. Isn't that correct?
I think there are a few.
Yeah. Some of our schools will meet the threshold, some of them did not. So it would be blank on some of them that did not get to the 10%.
So when I look at a particular school's report card, will I be able to see the percentage of parents that responded or?
I don't know that it'll show you the actual percent, but if they didn't meet the threshold, then it would be a blank area on the survey, much like the student.
I actually saw a presentation a couple of years ago from the University of Chicago, people that actually manage and run this. They said that that 10% mark is statistically significant. That's why they were comfortable with that, that mark in the data piece. So that's why. I will tell you, in my previous district, we were right around the same amount. It was about between 10 and 12%. I remember it. It was right there. Because we just barely got over the threshold to receive the data. I'd say it's typical. Well, I know we pushed it out how many times, Morgan and Jeff last?
Couple times over the course of two months.
Yeah. And asked parents to participate. Hopefully, some of you here did, if you remember. So, you know, we asked a couple of times. We can't force people to do it. You can certainly ask.
And the reason why our percentages are so high for students and staff is because we actually create time during the day for them to do this.
So Jeff, what's the thought process behind eliminating the supportive environment and ambitious instruction for this period?
What I have heard in previous meetings around the state is they feel that only students in grades six through 12 are mature enough and have enough academic experience to participate in the survey based upon the questions. And they think that the questions are probably a little bit too advanced and would require too much insight for elementary age students to participate or spark.
So like all of elementary schools are going to be, the three essentials might, might as well be two, but it doesn't make a lot of sense. The supportive environment is pretty important to a first grader, too.
Sure.
I mean, ask them a similar question. I don't, it seems.
And it's also somewhat baffling that parents and staff aren't given the opportunity to comment on either of those sections. But those two are reserved specifically for students.
I know there's reasons, I can't remember off the top of my head, that I know they've done sampling and norms and they've had data points that were inconsistent. So that's why they chose not to do it. That, if I remember correctly, it's been a couple of years when I heard that, that person speak on that. But I know that's why they limited, put those parameters around some of those, those issues. I do know there's a request statewide to expand it, basically exactly what you're saying. But I don't believe they've got it statistically at a point where they, they felt comfortable doing it. That's my understanding.
So aside from being posted with our state report card data, are you, can you utilize this information within our own district to make improvements? What might be some examples of that?
Well, certainly a part of the school improvement plan. Principals have seen some preliminary data for their schools. We've provided the reports that were available. We've provided the reports that were available to us, to the principals, just a few weeks ago. So they have taken that into account as they're going through the school improvement process. So likely, in future presentations to the board, maybe not necessarily this year, but from this year going forward, since we'll have two years of information related to the survey, you'll probably begin to see it incorporated into the school improvement plans and presentations.
I think an example on a school improvement team would do is, you would take, Jeff gave a couple of very specific examples. You drill down into some of those items and do an item analysis, and if you've got, you know, in one category, if you've got a couple outlier responses, you know, that's what you're looking at. Then you start to dig into with your staff, thinking about, well, how can we make progress there? Wonder why people responded this way at the middle and high school level? Why did the kids respond a certain way? Especially when there's outlier, you know, indicators along the way. Like, I'm, you know, it would depend, and that's where they drill into the agent every question, and look and see where the response is like. So that's the work. And then you might create a target at the building level, or at a grade level, or something like that, and how you might improve. That's the intent, that's the value of the use of the data.
So this is gonna be our first go-around with a good set of data from the Five Essential Survey.
Well, we first gave the survey in 2013.
Right.
That was the initial year for every school district in the state outside of Chicago Public Schools. So this is our second look at the data.
Are we still doing any, because we had started doing some school surveys independent of this. Is thinking that this will provide us with all the input we need, or will we continue to do some of our own independent surveys? Or are we not sure yet?
I don't think we're sure, quite frankly. I'm afraid to jump in here like that as well, and Jeff. The survey was handed to us, okay?
Right, oh, so you're required?
That's right, we are required to do it. You know, I do believe there's other instruments, and we do targeted surveys in some buildings, if there are particular culture and climate issues that we recognize, or if the principal requires it. Sometimes the staff requests it. It varies, we've done that situationally, not necessarily in every building. Some principals do it on their own. Some principals choose to do some type of a survey on their own. This one is obviously managed and outsourced in a, you know, separate setting. So we have done some of those. I know, you know, those have been targeted for specific purposes and reasons, and we've done all types of different surveys on certain initiatives. So this one's more broad, and we have not done that. Some districts, some districts actually do do that. You know, they choose to do that internally on their own, they purchase an instrument or hire somebody to do that survey. And that's, but that's an independent district decision if you choose to do that. I am aware that districts do that.
Well, I'll be curious, in listening to your explanation, I'm a little uncertain to the value we'll get out of this, but, I mean, we'll let you guys try to cover those golden nuggets that are within the survey.
It just, we felt like it was very important for the board to be aware of it and understand.
It was good that now that we know and we see it, I think we'll have a better idea of what we're looking at.
And parents may comment and ask questions, and reference the information as it comes up.
Jeff, do you know if the comparison group was the same group of schools in 2013, so that there's kind of an apples-to-apples, are we improving? No, you don't know?
That's a good question. And this whole aspect of the survey related to what districts are in our benchmark group is very nebulous. We've been able to find out very little information on it. But Bindikowski, who's our Director of Assessment, he is probing the state on this, asking questions, seeking greater clarification. He's been able to get clarification on a couple of other points that were unclear to us, so that's one that he's still pursuing.
Any other questions? Okay, heck. Okay, so before we dive into our conversation about the long-term facilities in our finance and planning discussion, we'll open it up for public comment. We ask people who want to address the board tonight, try to keep your comment limited to three minutes. If you can, keep it focused on our board agenda items. Public comment is not intended to be a dialogue with the board. If you're gonna talk about facilities, we're gonna have some conversations, you'll hear some of that later on tonight. If there is a follow-up required, we'll ask Dr. Harris to follow up on the board's behalf. And finally, we ask you to try to keep your comments respectful of individual staff members, students, and board members. With that, I don't, to be a member, we sign off. So anybody? So anybody wanna address the board? Group-friendly group, come on!
Oh boy, I don't know if I'm gonna be back.
You gotta be on the record.
I have to, because I'm freezing, so I'm shaking, I'm not.
It's part of our energy savings plan, sorry.
The boilers have not been fired up in the building yet.
There could be some caucuses every day. Well, good evening, I am Betsy Wintringer, and I am the HUH PTO co-president, and I thank you for the opportunity to address you all this evening. The good news is, these guys are here for moral support, we're not all here to address you for the sake of time. A little bit about me, I'm born and raised in Barrington, an active Barrington community person. I have a daughter who is a sixth grader at Station, and a son who has just started the all-day kindergarten at HUH. Thank you for that opportunity. As a HUH parent for six years, I can't tell you how absolutely thieving with pride I was when we were told that we were a Blue Ribbon Award winner recently. Unfortunately, it was short-lived, because right around that time, I had learned that our renovation that has been in various talks on an ongoing basis, were potentially being tackled yet again. And that gave way to a lot of frustrations, and hence why we're here this evening. Our Blue Ribbon Award was a long overdue acknowledgement of our fantastic school, our leadership, and our amazing staff. Our renovation, which I use loosely, is really a long overdue need to meet three basic rights that currently aren't being met. One, the comfort and privacy of our staff. Two, the compliance and functional environment for all those that enter HUH, including those with disabilities. And lastly, though most importantly, the safety of our students. As the headlines and statistics grow scarier on a daily basis around school violence, it's hard not to think about the what ifs. As you look at our little HUH, the most centrally located, publicly accessible school in the district, and ironically, the least secure. You enter HUH on any given day, you look into Mrs. Jodelski's fifth-grade classroom, our lunchroom slash gym, or Mrs. Nelson's gifted program, which houses some of the brightest minds across our district who come to learn, and you see how exposed our children are. And as a district that strives for excellence, and is investing in the likes of attendance software, and coordinating logos to become and strengthen our competitive position within our district, I should have to think that the safety of our HUH students would be a priority. So we ask of you, let's explore a reasonable solution that meets all parties' needs and works within a responsible budget. But let's act now, not next year, not three years, not five years down the road. It's worth noting, and I think I mentioned this, that plans in various forms, sorry.
Keep going.
Plans in various forms have been on the table since I've been at HUH, and long before I came to HUH. So, it's been too long. No more bandits, please. It's time to address these issues, and for this project to receive the attention is long overdue. Please, let's work together to keep HUH in the headlines for all the right reasons, and not those that could have been provided. Thank you.
Thank you. Did good. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Still the HUH?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll declare public comment closed. But as we do that, you know, you mentioned it, but I think this is the first board meeting we've had since the announcement of HUH's Blue Ribbon. So I think we need to celebrate that a little bit, a little round of applause. You guys ready? This is, this is big stuff!
I'm always good with a mic, you know that? So, and I wore my blue tie today.
I see that.
I got interviewed by quintessential Barrington today as well.
Very good.
It was a fun day, but it's been a great week with the, with the announcement last Tuesday on the 29th, and it's been a celebration since. It's a great school. I love our school. I remember when I took over, it was late in the summer of 2013. I signed the contract on July 29th, and I remember Dr. Leonard looking at me, and only the way Dr. Leonard could do this. And he said to me, he said, he said, "You know, HUH?" And he's kinda rubbing his head.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
And, and he said, "It's a, it's a really neat place. It's small, and yet, there's just a lot of great things." He talked about the extended self-contained program there. And then he said, he said, "Olfz, don't screw it up." It's only Dr. Leonard would do. It's a great place. We talked about, and by the way, we looked, and I kept thinking, "We gotta work on the effective leaders." I gotta do a better job here, it looks like. But when you talk about collaborative teachers, and involved families, and all these different things, we've got that at HUH. There's a lot of really good things going on. And two of the, two of the best phone calls I made one week when we discovered that we were nominated, I called Dr. Wilcox, and I, and I called Dr. Becky Gill, and I said, "We've been nominated because of a lot of great leadership, a lot of phenomenal teaching, the parent support, but most importantly, most importantly, the kids, and them coming every day and working really hard." And so I'm so proud of our school, it's a great place, and so, thank you very much.
We will be asking you, Mr. Olson, and representatives from staff back formally.
Yeah, yeah, formally.
That's right. So, we will be doing that in a future board meeting. And I know you have a group that's headed to Washington DC in November to receive the award, correct? Excited.
This is the kind of award, it's worth celebrating many times. So, congratulations again. And just to kinda anchor expectations, if there's some folks in here from HUH that are, you know, wanna advocate, you know, as many of us do, for, you know, that renovation there, that is exactly what you pointed out, it's actually been in the books for a while. You know, I don't know where our conversation's gonna go tonight, we're gonna start at a fairly high level, so I don't know that we're gonna get into trying to prioritize, you know, individual projects, you know, Facilities Committee, you know, who does that in our committee, and then they bring that, those suggestions to the board, you know, in the spring. Right, early spring? Yeah, yeah. I think of anything after the first of the year as spring, spring semester. You know, so I don't know that we're gonna get into prioritizing individual projects tonight, but we are gonna talk about, you know, some larger financing issues and facility planning issues that certainly could potentially have an impact in some of that prioritization scheme. So I just wanna anchor your expectations on where tonight's conversation may end up. But with that, I'll turn over, I know you have a presentation.
We do.
You wanna start out with?
We do, to hopefully guide our conversation this evening about this, I'm gonna turn over to Tim Newbauer here in a minute, and he's gonna walk through some details here about, first of all, our financial situation as far as our long-term debt goes, and related, directly related to our facilities, and how the community has supported facility enhancement and improvement over time. Also then, we're going to share a incomplete, yet brainstormed list of facility issues and priorities in the district, we'll get to that, talk a little bit about some of our assets we have, and hopefully then lead into some broader conversations about what are our next steps? What, as a board, how would you wanna direct me at this time? How do you want to direct our committees, or whether it be the Finance Committee, the Facilities Committee, to move forward with some of our work, and thinking about how we can deal with some of our most pressing issues, and maybe some of our long-term issues? So, I'm gonna turn over to Tim, and he's gonna walk us through some details about these issues. So, Tim?
Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? As both Brian's alluded to, this is a bigger, kinda overview, long-range, larger scope finance, possible financing opportunities, as well as the big picture facilities, addressing some of the big picture facility needs that we have in the district. I'll have less answers to questions than even Jeff had earlier today, but there'll be a lot of questions asked, so. Taking a look at this graphic that illustrates the board's strategic plan, you can see, if I can figure out where the pointer works here, oops, nope, just turned it off. Where's the pointer here? Where's the leader?
You're a Packer fan, right?
Yeah. The Bears won one, I know, that's good, a big head right away. If you look right here, balanced long-term, short-term facility planning versus debt capacity. As we all know, you know, we keep the temperature nice and comfortable in the buildings, and our buildings and ground staff does, takes care of that, as well as does a lot of other as far as keeping our day-to-day operations and our facilities very comfortable and very livable, and a great environment for our kids to learn in. Over and above that, particularly through our Facilities Committee, we look at more significant building improvements on an annual basis. Those projects are by and large funded through non-referendum selling of bonds, which is called the debt service extension base. Now, this is gonna be kinda scary, but this chart, now, it looks like a scary chart, and I'll get into this in a little detail, so don't worry about it too much. But basically, debt service extension base, under the property tax extension limitation law, the board is authorized to sell, in our case, about $2.1 million of the bonds, without referendum, on an annual basis. And what the board does with that $2.1 million is they have, in recent years at least, allocated that towards cap, funding of capital projects. In addition to that $2.1 million, we have taken about $400,000 on an annual basis out of our operating funds and supplemented that, so that we're spending in the neighborhood of about $2.5 million a year on capital projects. As you well know, you know, the HUH projects, one of those projects that keeps coming to the service year after year, and we talk about it, it's a big nut. We have a lot of other projects of different scale in the district on an annual basis. The Facilities Committee wrestled with that on year after year after year. Over and above that, historically, for big projects, like the renovation of the high school, the building of some of our elementary schools, the boards, prior boards have gone out to referendum and asked the public to allow the board to sell bonds in order to finance the building of some of these bigger projects. This chart illustrates that. If you look, you know, I talked about the debt service extension base financing. This, these first couple rows of the, of this, of this chart shows our debt service, okay, for debt service extension bond selling. You can see in the current year, 2015, this one right here, this year, we sold bonds in the amount of just over $2 million to do what I just talked about earlier. Next year, the board has already approved for next year to do a similar amount for next year. So you see that, it gets, it gets paid off in the same year that it's issued. This yellow stripe here is the current year that we're in right now, okay, for a point of reference. So you can see the, you know, we, the board authorizes the sale of bonds, we sell the bonds, we get the money, we go through the projects, we do that year after year after year, over the last few years, over many years actually. Over and above that, again, I talked about referendum bonds. Now, if you look, I'm gonna pop these, there's about seven of these columns here that have to do with referendum bonds, okay? The first one is just kind of a summation of a number of prior bonds that are finishing up, basically our mortgage payment, or are paying off these bonds in this year. or are paying off these bonds in this year. You can see the yellow line, which is the current year, the last payment on those prior bonds is on this year. So that column will go away after this year, we're done. The next year, or the next column, you'll see we've got $72 million. And that, those bonds were originally issued to renovate the high school and renovate seven of, seven of the elementary schools. This was back in 2000, or excuse me, 1999, 1998. You can see since then, a lot of the, a lot of that $72 million, $72 million has been paid off or refinanced, and you can see in the debt structure in another two years, that'll also be paid off, okay?
Can I stop there for just a second?
Sure.
Again, it's just a little historical note, 'cause if you look at this, you'll see there's various amounts on, on the 98 general obligation school bonds.
Right.
Right? Previous, the previous board, should be before I got on the school board, structured all of those bonds that were issued in the 90s and 2000s, structured them to create a level payment in an aggregate basis, right? The idea was try to keep the changes to the taxpayers year over year minimum, right? So if I have a level tax payment or a level debt payment, right, that's gonna go to the taxpayers, um, it'll be relatively consistent on the tax book. And, you know, versus if you kept a, kind of a, a similar payment, but you had a different bond issue stacked on top of each other, you know, your payments could be going up or down which would create uncertainty in the tax books. So what you'll see is you go through the different series, you'll see sometimes these, these somewhat different payment structures, 'cause it's probably in reaction to what was happening with another bond at the time, right? So you see as they start layering on top of each other, the idea was to try to keep the payment the same over time.
And that, we'll get to that in a little, in a little while here. You can see at the very end, as all these columns year by year get lined up across here, you'll see as, and we'll, I'll show this in more detail later, but, um, you can see the debt structure, the total debt structure on an annual basis of what the taxpayers ask to pay for to pay for our debt service, or essentially our mortgage payment, um, is very steady and, and a, pretty much a steady decline as we go forward, and we'll get into more, this is key later on. But to Brian's point, we don't want fluctuations year to year in this total number, because one year taxpayers are gonna be asked to pay X amount of money, and the next year's gonna be X plus, you know, 500, and the next year it might be X minus 200 because of fluctuations. If we don't get this total number to be a, a reliable number, let's say they're a steady number, not a roller coaster ride for the taxpayers from year to year. So, anyway, going back to this next, this next one, we had the 1998, and that was for the renovation of the high school and the seven elementary schools. The next one on the list, which is this one right here, in 2002, we took, we refinanced 2000, year 2000 bonds that were originally sold to Bill Roslin Road, Countryside, and further renovations on the high school. So what that means is that there was an earlier bond issue. You gotta remember, as time goes on here, interest rates are fluctuating, or in general, going down, especially in, in, in recent years. So what happens is, when bonds are sold, they're sold with an attached interest rate to them. But as interest rates decline, we watch that, and we take advantage of a declining interest market, call back, a lot of the bonds are callable, which means we can go back to the people that bought them and say, "Hey, we wanna buy these back," and then we refinance them at a, at a lower interest rate, therefore, over time, lowering our interest costs. So that's why you'll see a lot of these are gonna be refinancing of earlier bonds. So this is the first case of that. Now, as you can see, this refinancing, uh, of $28 million approximately, we're, that'll get paid off now in another five years. You know, here's, here's the current year, five years from now, that one will be paid off. Going to the next one, we got another refinancing. In 2004, we, we refinanced $16.9 million on bonds that were originally sold in 1998 to renovate the high school and seven elementary schools, which is basically a partial refunding of that first one we talked about here. And there's yet another one of these to come. So we're, as interest rates are going down, there's more and more opportunities for us to take advantage of those lowering interest rates, refinancing, and overall having our costs decrease because of lower interest rates as we go forward. 2007, a lot of you were probably here at that time. Um, that's when we sold $4.4 million to finance the construction of the new stadium over at the high school. You can see, this is our longest bond issue outstanding. You can, you know, it's one of our, it's our more recent bond issue. It was essentially a 20-year bond, pretty steady. You can see it's about $350,000 payments all the way through until about fiscal year 2020, at the end of fiscal year 2021, 22, okay? That's kind of key as we go forward here. We're almost done. The next refinancing was a refinance of a 1997 bond issue originally sold to Bill Barber Rose or Barrington, and in addition to BHS Prairie Campus. Again, for $8.8 million, that one will be done next year. And the last one is $870,000. In 2012, we refinanced, again, part of that earlier bond issue in 1998 that weren't available to be called back from purchasers of the bonds on those earlier refinancing opportunities. So, that's what our debt structure looks like. The key thing to look here, as we look at the whole thing, is a lot of this debt, again, the total debt, I kind of condensed it, I took out the middle section of that whole graph. We've got the levy year, which you really don't have to concern yourself about, but the fiscal year is basically our school year. So, right now, this yellow line, we're in school year or, or fiscal year 2016. Our current bond debt for this year that we're gonna ask the taxpayers to pay for is just over $13 million. County clerks add about another percent on there to make sure that they're covered for bad collections and that type of thing. So that's essentially what actually goes to the taxpayers to, to, uh, to pay down the debt. Going forward, you can see, you know, next year it's gonna be about the same amount, goes down about $2 million the year after that, primarily because for this year yet, the board has not decided whether or not they're gonna sell BSEB bonds. If they do say, sell BSEB bonds, that'll be another roughly $13 million, okay? If they don't, it'll be the 11. You know, same thing going forward as we go through here. The key thing here is, as I said, or as I mentioned earlier, 2020 to, the 2022 school year, the one that ends June 30th of 2022, look what happens to our debt. Goes down to almost nothing. And, uh, we may actually be looking at doing something with these remainder debts between now and, um, maybe even within the next year or so. Actually, we're gonna be talking about it at the Finance Committee meeting next week, which is 7:30 on Tuesday morning over at James Street, if anybody wants to go, 7:30 AM that is, so. See you there. Anyway, we've got a, we, to take a look at some of our, what we wanna do now is just talk about whether, what kind of projects, get the discussion going as far as what kind of big, big, big projects and facility needs are we looking at in the district to look at, maybe taking advantage of the opportunity to, um, use some of this, um, freed-up debt opportunity, I guess I'll call it, and not, and minimize the impact on the taxpayer. That's something that the board will have to talk about and decide what to do with it as we go forward over the next number of years. Some of the things that we just kind of brainstormed, we looked at master's, uh, capital and facility considerations. We've kind of lumped them very initially, this is a draft. This is a very preliminary framework of how we might wanna look at and how we might wanna get around, get our arms around some potential capital project needs going forward over the next three to four years as we look to, again, to having the possibility of having, uh, the board take advantage of some opportunities in our debt structure. Facility enhancements, you know, Hough is one of them. Maybe we'll take, we might be able to take care of Hough in the meantime, but if, for some reason we don't, it's on that list as well as a number of items you see here. Educational initiatives, things like introduction of elementary STEM space, you can see them all listed here. And I'll put this slide back up again later for reference. District-wide standardization, 21st century classroom standardization, voice-over-IP net television, uh, telephone systems, you know, different systems, standardization projects there. And then the list of our assets. In addition to our, uh, the school buildings that we use, we've got newly acquired property on Hart Road, which is just west of the high school property. Miller Road, we have, uh, some property that's located just south between, basically, Miller Road and North Barrington Height, our elementary school, that we have designs on making, freeing up, uh, parking space as well as improving the traffic flow over at, uh, North Barrington. The Kelsey Road property, which is basically Highway 14 and Kelsey Road, uh, it's where the Knights of Columbus used to have a big barn and kind of a banquet center. We own that property, that would be suitable for something, say, like a middle school. Barbara Rose property, again, right next to Barbara Rose Elementary, we have vacant land there that, again, could accommodate a middle school. Woodland, right now, is not being utilized as a school space, but we do use it for some storage right now. James Street Administration Center, we have mobile classrooms over at Station in Prairie. And then, uh, you know, we're looking at the introduction of a computerized asset management system as part of our, kind of broader assets. Here's the locations of, uh, the properties that I just mentioned. There's the James Street Administration Center. Let's see, we are right here, oops, sorry about that. We're right here. Uh, the red stars are our school buildings, our occupied school buildings right now. Uh, the green circles are vacant properties that could be available for future use. The, uh, the green stars are, uh, properties that we are using now, you know, Woodland Elementary School, for example. Um, so that kind of gives you a, a kind of a graphic depiction of what properties and what, um, real assets we have available as we take a look at how we wanna get our arms around what, how to address some of the needs we may foresee looking at as we go forward the next couple of years. Major, um, a major facility and financing plan is a, is a long process. You know, you saw that the, um, the opportunity for the possibility of taking on new debt, um, is, you know, five years out. And that doesn't preclude the board, if they decide to take on additional debt in the meantime, but that looks like a good opportunity going out about five years. So we're, that's why we wanted to, we wanted to start the discussions now as far as what would that look like? Trying to get an idea of, you know, where we're going, you know, where we're going, um, programmatically, what kind of facilities we, we might wanna have at that point? What facilities we need to replace? What do we need to build? What do we need to delete? All that stuff is involved in this discussion. So this is kind of an overall framework. We're right here, I mean, we gotta go, you know, community input, there's a lot of things that have to be done here as we go through the process and identify what we may or may not wanna do going forward and how we may wanna use the possibility, again, of funds in the future to, to fund those projects. Couple questions, what further, uh, questions do you have about long-term debt service? We can go back to that. Uh, what clarifying questions or input would you, do you have about the master capital facility considerations? And what next steps? So, this is kind of a framework of getting the, the discussions open as far as what the board will be looking at, and future boards looking at as, as 2022 approaches. Any questions?
I wanna thank Tim for walking through a little bit of a history lesson here, and a little bit of a clarifying. I know some of you probably are very familiar with that. Some of you may not be, and hopefully it was able to get us at a point where we can have that broader conversation. Um, you know, one of the, if, if the board's okay with this, would like to have this kind of guided conversation here, unless you have questions about any of the information or clarifying or anything that was shared from Tim before we get into any of these, uh, the detail here. Questions from the board, or comments on any of the information that was shared?
Let's go, kind of step through it piece by piece.
That'd be fine.
Go, go back to the PMH chapter, so.
Okay. Start right there.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Which, which one?
Uh, the one we had the summary.
The summary.
You know, where it shows that we end in...
Just the four columns, you mean?
Yeah.
That one.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
There you go.
So, how, how do you guys respond in terms of long-term planning? When you look at this and you, you know, we see that, you know, our existing, you know, kind of building debt, you know, retires at the end of 2021. Right, I mean, there's, there's different options, you know, in terms of thinking about what you, the district, could do at that point now. You know, um, as we're making long-term plans, some of that would be influenced on what we think, you know, a reasonable plan might be between either now and then, or at that time. I mean, how do you guys react to it? What do you think the implications are? I mean, should we just? So here, let me, um, are we gonna say that?
Well, I, I think, is your question, what are the implications as far as borrowing more at the end of this five-year period? Is that, is that your question? I mean, I...
So...
We could.
Yeah, could, right? So I mean, when, when you get, I mean, we're, we're ending up, right? We have a lot of big facility issues, potentially, right? And we don't have a lot of money for a lot of big facility issues, right? Now, I think what we've been doing, right, and our Facilities Committee would say this, I mean, you know, we've been deferring a lot of projects that are important, but we don't have money, right? And you can defer them for only so long. Uh, I always think of the, the sewer project at Rose. Right, I mean, we've been, that's, we've been needing to do that for years, right? But... The high, yeah, there's a lot of things like that, but we, we keep deferring. Now, you know, at some point, you have to say, "Okay, I have to stop deferring, I just have to do it all," or you've gotta have a plan to do it, right? And I think, you know, for some, we're trying to get to that point, right? Trying to take care of the urgent stuff, and we've been deferring a lot of things that we would like to do, um, until, you know, I think when the community gets to the point of 2021, right? The first reaction we all have as taxpayers is hallelujah, right? We've paid off the mortgage, we're good. Let's take a break for a while, right? And, and, you know, sometimes, you know, the problem with that is if you take, if you just take a break for a while, you're gonna put yourself into the same situation that we got into in the 90s. You know, there's no reason for us, if, if the district is well-managed into the future, You know, there's no reason for us, if, if the district is well managed into the future, there's no reason why we should have a debt load that high, right? That's the product of overreacting to letting your facilities go for too long, right? If you kept your facilities up on a regular basis, the community could probably support something lower than that number on a regular basis, right? And the school district just tries to, you know, structure your priorities accordingly. So, you know, there's been a thought that, you know, at that point, we could let the tax rate go down a little bit, right? But not necessarily go all the way to zero. We're down to some responsible number, you know, that, you know, is a combination of what the, the school might need, what the community is comfortable with, and have that conversation with the community and say, okay, we're going to fund our schools and the capital this way. I don't know what that number is, you know, if it's $5 million a year or $10 million, I don't know anything what it is. But I, I think the idea is if you're going to have that conversation at that time with the community, right? If you're going to say, you know, our plan is we're just going to try to, you know, do the best we can until we get to that point and defer a lot of the big rocks to that conversation, right? And then present a master plan to the community, right? And say, okay, we've gotten this far, here's all the big projects that we need to do, you know, over the next 10 years. It's going to cost X amount of money, right? We're going to spread it out evenly and try to sell it to the community.
That opportunity presents itself at that point.
And the implications are, if you buy into that strategy, right? That means you, we're just going to try to, we have to just keep limping along, right? With our two and a half or three million dollars a year to take care of maintenance in big capital projects and prioritize accordingly. And some of that stuff's just going to keep, it may have to wait for five or six years.
And in the meantime, we do, in the next five years, we do have capital needs. We do, we know we do. We currently have a list much longer than the two and a half or three million dollars or whatever it is allocated, and we do. And we certainly can get into that conversation here in a minute. But I think it's, it's about having a conversation about, okay, what things can we plan for at, you know, down the road? What things do we need to address right now or in the next year or two, or the next five years for that matter? Prior to going out to a referendum type question to the community.
I think, I think the more prudent way to do it is, is what you just said. You know, I think if we, it's not our job to say, okay, let's go out and get some more debt just because it's coming due.
No.
I think we as a board need to set our priorities on what do we want to do and when, and then figure out how much funding that requires.
Right.
I think to do it the other way around doesn't make any sense.
Well, you have to, I think you have a plan.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just curious, I didn't get to go to the facilities meeting today. I missed it, and I know that you guys do a very challenging job of fitting lots of projects within the small dollars that we have for facilities. And I'm just wondering if you could give us an update of some of the things that you discussed today, because I think that would help me get my arms around a little bit about, you know, what, what do you think we can do this year and?
Our conversation didn't necessarily focus, well, remember the summer projects we approved that were handled over the summer are out of this year's budget. So we had a really high-level glance at potential projects for next year at our last meeting. We really didn't spend a lot of time talking about them today. So we had an update on the current projects and where we're at within our budget though. Does that answer your question?
For the sake of the people that are here from Huff, did you discuss Huff and is there a plan in place?
I can do some stuff. Yeah, we've discussed Huff on several occasions. The, it's, I think a lot of the, of what Dr. Harris said kind of really hits at the heart of it. There are some, I, I agree with Brian that the part of what tonight's about is more of a 30,000-foot view, the bigger picture, looking forward into the future. And then what Dr. Harris said really strikes home for us in the facilities committee because with the funding that we currently have, we are truly limping along. It's very difficult to take on projects that would wipe out 60% to 70% of your budget on one hit when you're trying to maintain 12 buildings. It's, it's why I think Penny and I really wanted to have one of the committee, the whole meetings like this, to try to team up with the finance committee people, because it really makes sense to do that, because right now we're not in a position as a facilities committee. We do a five-year plan. We have a 10-year plan. We have these guys, you know, we have these guys running priority lists through principals, through their own lens. We have all kinds of processes that we have in place to try to prioritize the money that we have. The issue becomes one of the actual amounts. And, you know, there are issues that we have where we can't, we can't justify a project without different financing that would wipe out that much money and then worry about having a roof spring a leak when we, you know, we got to keep the roofs over all the kids' heads and keep their heads dry and so on and so forth. There's, there are certain things that just, you know, they, they chew up a lot of the budget. When you're spending $500,000 a year on roofing repairs, and you, you can't let those go, because otherwise we end up in the nineties again. Where we have.
You could take that list where you got, you had, you listed some of the projects.
The next one, there you go.
I think it's all these lumpy projects that, it seems like we rarely do a project that costs more than a million in, in, even.
You know, rather more than a half a million dollars. I mean, the biggest one that we've done out of summer projects has been the station locker room, which was like 880,000. And even with that one, what we did is we, if you remember, we took out a little bit of a.
We did it over a couple of years, right?
Well, no, what we did is we borrowed from the capital projects fund. So we spent more in one year because we used the money out of that fund. And then the next year, we shorted the capital projects.
We refunded it, right?
I think, if you look at this list, the facility enhancements, let's just look at that.
Yeah, and let's just, and I ask, you know, our facilities folks and board members, I mean, let's just kind of go through this, right? Because I think it's an important list to understand about all the different things, at least that have bubbled up to the surface so far. So let's start the cafeteria and library, right? You know, and I have to tell you, when I got on the facilities committee 12 years ago, this was there, right? And, you know, I, I think the concept is probably still the same, right? When you go into the high school, you know, that, that well that's to the right, right by the cafeteria and the library's above it, if you were to expand that out, right? We would gain cafeteria space because, you know, back in '08, we were kind of in violation of the fire code, to be honest with you. So we needed more cafeteria space. And at the time, we were forecasting that the library and media services was going to change and we can create more student-centered learning areas. Well, that has gotten even more relevant now.
Exactly. That project has even evolved more significantly than, than we maybe we would have even thought five years ago.
And it's got a huge price tag.
It's probably about one of a million and a half now, right?
I don't, we were saying a million.
Well, you also got the front, if you look down the list, you also see the front entrance to the high school there. I mean, there, you know, that's all in that area, so I don't know how, you know, what level do you expand all that into one project, right?
But that's a big, that's a big.
It is.
But the high school certainly needs. What's the lines recap?
There is, there are significant issues and needs at lines in regard to some plumbing issues, some drainage.
Library.
The, yeah, the carpet.
Ventilation issue.
HVAC.
Replacing the older units that are existing.
Is that something you can do? What's the price tag on that?
Significant.
It's a significant, it's okay, we're, we're again in a multi-million dollar application.
Yeah. It, it's an overbuilding now. I mean, it, it's an overbuilding that has not had significant renovation for a period of time, and it's mechanical.
And I.
It's not even like, I mean, and that's just like one out of seven.
What do you mean? You know, I understand.
It's not even one that's been on, we've talked about the flooding pieces and the other stuff, it just keeps snowballing, you know? It hasn't even been a major focus in our conversations because of all the other issues.
That's correct. I mean, this is a bigger picture, longer-term thing.
And just for a little context, you know, when we saw those bond schedules back in 1998 or maybe 2000, when we talked about rehabbing seven elementary schools, well, they weren't really rehabbed. It was more of an equitable, an attempt at becoming equitable. Every school, every elementary school except Huff, because it was landlocked, received a two-station gym. Prior to that, not all the schools had a two-station gym. There were some other things, air conditioning in some cases, to make the buildings all have similar facilities. Since then, there haven't really, so 20 years, well, coming up by 20 years, there really haven't been any major initiatives at any of those schools. It's just been the maintenance.
At Grove, Heinz, Huff, not, not all of them, except for the new buildings.
Correct.
Why just those four schools on roofs? Are those the immediate priority?
Those are on a schedule over the next several years.
Those buildings when they were built, there were some critical issues in the design of the roofs, and you had considerable maintenance issues with those roofs. Normally, I would anticipate that that roof would have about a 30-year life. We're already repairing decking to the wooden roofs. The, the contractors who installed that are all out of business. So we've done a lot of fixing repairs. I, I don't want to get too into the detail, but what I'm, what I'm saying on those four roofs, the way they were built, we literally, when we have to go to fix them, they're a tear-off and a rebuild. And when we look at them, I would prefer that we would move towards a standing seam metal roof application that would give us a 50-year life versus a shingle that was applied to those roofs that you would find in your general house or garage.
So you're talking about new roofs versus maintenance?
Um, this, this is not maintenance, those are not maintenance. We are doing everything, and, and I will tell you, we put money into every one of those roofs every single year to keep them dry. But when we finally have to take those roofs down, which is coming, those roofs will have to be renovated. If we stay with the shingle roof, there's nothing wrong with it, and many people have them on their houses, and we can go to a 30, 50-year shingle. But generally in a commercial building, we would go with a metal roof application, with a membrane underneath it, and none of us will have a discussion of that.
What kind of dollars are we talking about? I'm just trying to hear.
That's, those are considerable dollars. I have not even put those together at this time, but what we're talking about is about a million dollars a building.
Per building.
So you're talking about just in those roofs, four to five million dollars to bring them up to the standard that we really should have on those buildings. I can't answer what happened during the construction, I wasn't here at that time, and only tell you what I know from walking them and dealing with their problems. They are not what we normally would see, yank the shingles off, put new shingles on, we're back to 30 more years. We're not going to make the 30 years on those shingles. And, and shingles are not bad, and I don't want anybody to think I'm saying shingles are bad. We just redid Sunny Hill with a 50-year shingles on it, but totally redid the way that was done. And I know I'll never hear about Sunny Hill's roof being replaced. I will not exist at that point in time. So those roofs need to be looked at in the next five to 10 years. Those are going to have to go away and be rebuilt, one way or another. They're going to have to be totally rebuilt.
What was the price tag on the Sunny Hill roof with the shingles?
$250,000 on that roof, but pitches are different, smaller, and the structure was good. We're talking, the sheeting was in perfectly good shape, we replaced no wood. I will tell you, when we do those roofs, we will replace the sheeting. First of all, just a simple example of why I'm saying that, the sheeting was originally put down with a shingle nail. If you look at a shingle nail, a shingle nail is about an inch. A sheeting nail is two and a half inches. That's why the sheeting's pulling up and working. So everywhere we have that problem, we've gone back, filled it back, reworked it, re-nailed it down. The, the damage has occurred, I can't pull that history back out of it. So as the year goes down, and we get closer to the point where we got to take that roof down, we have to prepare for the reality of that roof. And that is a total tear-out. And at that point, we can do it in a shingle, which is a little cheaper, or we can up it to what we want to never deal with again. We put a, a standing seam roof that has a waterproof membrane underneath the standing seam roof, you're done. And, you know, in the future, you could extend it by repainting the metal roof. As long as we watch it throughout the years and push it even to like in the range of seven to five years. So it's a great investment, you know, your, your dollars spent to the outcome.
Okay, so I want, I want to move through this list quickly, but I think we get the point, there's some big roof replacements that are out there, not just maintenance. Athletic fields, what's fit by that?
I think it's, well, it's, it's looking at all of our athletic fields across the district at our, you know, our different sites, including our, our high schools and re-looking at the Field of Dreams, re-looking at a lot of our field space that is dated. And there's, again, it's hard to put a number on that, but it's significant when you rework or when you have those.
We've talked about with the land we have across our road.
That's correct, that's a piece of that.
Rethinking the whole high school campus.
That's right.
Is that captured in one of these other ones? You have the traffic parking. I think it's probably the one here that's just the whole BHS campus.
It is, it's, it's all inclusive.
And, and also looking besides just the field application, also ADA access to all those students, enhancing that.
And you probably, you know, middle schools.
Middle schools, all, all of that will be included because we're looking at master wise across the district.
In a comprehensive fashion.
This list is just a starter, I mean, as we go forward, when we take.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I just want the board, as a board, let us just kind of digest this so we get a sense of what's there. The pool deck tile?
Pool deck tile in the high school, that's a ceramic tile deck and the pool. We have a constant maintenance issue on that. What we're looking to do is go away from that application and go to an epoxy floated floor and deck. It reduces the maintenance, it reduces positivity injury on, on broken tiles that occur on a regular basis in there, so.
And again, you're saying this is probably, is this north of a million bucks?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't think we're looking at that, but we're, we're looking.
So you might be able to do this in a summer project if you had to.
Yeah, you're probably looking at somewhere in the 300,000 range.
Traffic and parking is part of the campus thing. Windows and exterior metal wall panels, now you have just Station here?
This is Station.
Yeah, Station, if you look at Station School, it has single-pane windows with a Core 10 metal wall, and then you have the, the masonry application. That Core 10 looks like it's rusted, it was originally designed to look that way, but very inefficient, it's starting to fail, and we have to start looking at replacing those panels. Higher efficiency panels, insulated, something that is not Core 10, which at one time, at the time it was built, was kind of an attractive look. It is not considered that anymore. We look at something that would enhance the efficiency of the area and could throw in danger to those applications.
What's the price tag there?
We haven't even priced that one out yet, but I would, I would say, once you pull all that out and rework the walls and that, we're, we're looking at another half a million dollars or, or more, half to three quarters.
Again, it's possible to do in a summer project. The Huff renovation in addition, what just, I mean, I know we talked a little bit about it, what's the current thinking on that in terms of scope and dollars? Do we have an estimate?
We have a rough estimate at 1.8, which was done based upon a cursory, quick, high-level design. We did go, we redesigned it. Those designs have been refined at this point, and we're going to reprice them out to get the best cost estimate in the near future that's going to pepper for pricing for us so that we'll have a good design. We're, we are still feeling pretty confident with 1.0. And that's all, and that's including the alternate of the extended storage.
That includes a reorganization of the office area, entryway, the entryway with a ADA accessible entrance, reformatting that, the classroom immediately on the entrance as well as the entire office area, and also plumbing on the inside for washrooms as well as storage area off the gym that has never existed in that site. So it's, that's essentially it. Did I miss something in particular?
ADA, accessible nurses area.
Yeah, correct.
And the security enhanced entrance, vestibule application.
Relocating the, the network closet that currently is full.
And on that project, some of the bigger price items that you wouldn't expect are things that you don't see.
Yeah, it's invisible. A lot of the plumbing, reworking the plumbing, expanding the, the washrooms, the nurse's office, the entrance with an ADA ram. It costs on the outside as well as additional storage space in the gym area. There are not additional space, space, there is no space there now.
So it costs more than you would, you would think it would, but there's a lot of things that aren't apparent to the eye, it just needs to be done because, like the plumbing and the electrical stuff.
And some of the other challenges that we had too is as soon as you start working things on, on the outside at Huff.
things on the outside at Huff, being in town there, you have to be compliant with all of the rules and things. There's a specific way they want things done, so, and some of those are not cost neutral. They're things that we have to comply to, that if we want to do it, we're going to have to incorporate in the cost of the project.
So it's an estimate of 1.8 million. We haven't bet it, but when you bet it, you know, you'll see.
What's the Sunny Hill cafeteria?
Wait, hold on. On the Huff part, one of the things that Brian and I talked about was, could we get an estimate on phase one and phase two, so that phase one addresses what we heard from Betsy tonight of, you know, the safety of moving that front classroom, and then the restroom facilities for the staff? And then phase two would include, you know, the gym, storage, and other things that are not necessarily directly related, so that you'd have two things from the architects coming in. One is phase one, phase two, and the other bid would be the whole ball of wax.
We would have to redesign the project for that bid slightly. There'd have to be some redesign, because right now it wasn't designed to be divided. So part of that would have to go out there and have our architect redesign it, and then we would have to put it out to bid and determine what we could do and could do in that renovation if we phased it between years without disrupting the act of doing the capability of building.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, we would do everything at once to not have disruption to the school more than once.
Correct.
And I'm just, if we could prioritize that, you know, we've heard from the community at Huff, I hear it everywhere I go, every single day, about the safety of Huff Street School. Parents are very, very concerned about having their kids in that building when it's set up in its current existence. And if there is a way that we could break it down, you know, to make it more affordable and even get it done next summer, that would be, you know, awesome.
Tom, I think it's worth mentioning too, we didn't talk about that today specifically. We talked about phasing, we had our architect there, we talked about what the possible phases would look like and how, and what it would make sense to do in phases in terms of the trades. The issue that we have too is when you have a group of tradesmen come out and do part of a job, and then you have them come out the next year to do the other part, you're going to pay for them to retool, reschedule, do the whole thing. The cost of the project won't stay 1.8 million.
Yeah, I would rather just do it in one summer and then just, but if you're going to pay for it two or three years, we can handle that internally.
You can stage the, yeah, the cost.
Right. It's more how we finance it internally than, if you're going to do it, just do it all in one year.
And we had some conversation about that too, which maybe we can talk about when we're done with all of these, because it would apply to any of these projects.
That's the problem, right?
Yeah, it could apply to any of these, but that one in particular certainly.
But being mindful about our finances, how it relates to projects, is something that I don't want to leave here without discussing too.
So just kind of quickly go through the, Sunny Hill Cafeteria Storage, what's that?
It's storage and the cafeteria kitchen renovation.
So you can do that summer thing, that's enough.
You keep saying that, but you've.
All these summer things are all sudden.
They all add up, and they, you know, when you're doing a half a million dollar, half a million dollar roof renovations every year.
Guess we could.
I know.
It cuts in.
I don't mean to be flirty.
And these aren't up here to say that we can't do some of them with summer projects. It's just for the board to be aware of some of the lumpier things that are coming before us, that's all.
And as Penny was saying, you have to remember, every year, and to the wisdom of the board who's been doing this, we maintain $500,000 of the capital off the bat to maintain roofs. That's not major renovation, that's maintenance sections, okay? We put $200,000 every year in the program to maintain concrete and asphalt. That's, and that's why you don't see big holes in our lots and trip hazards like that. We work hard at maintaining that. The original plan, we should have had was a million dollars a year in rosin, $450,000 a year in asphalt and flatwork, concrete sidewalks, all those things. With strategic planning and analysis, we have been able to handle it at half of that cost. But that $700,000 every year comes right out of the capital budget before we even talk about anything else. And that's to keep the heads dry, the collateral damage down, and our liabilities reduced. Very important stuff. So right off the bat, that's taken a chunk. So every time we look at a $500,000 project, remember, we're starting off $700,000 in a minus out of two, 2.2 million, 2.5 million.
And having, you know, it might sound like a lot of money to spend annually on roofing projects, but it wasn't so long ago that we would get a daily report of how many buckets they had in the hallways at station, you know, 22, 30, you know. We don't want to go there again.
No, you don't want to deal with collateral that goes along with that, the environmental issues and the follow-up damage. We work very hard to prevent having those issues.
And you do a good job, and you're good to remind us of it, because if you didn't do it, we'd yell at you.
So what's the Sunny Hill cafeteria?
It's the kitchen. The kitchen area is very limited, let's put it that way. And we actually serve more meals out of that kitchen, or out of that school than we do, you know, any elementary school, and almost to the level of a middle school or beyond. Because we're serving breakfast, we're serving lunch, we have afternoon programs there, the Boys and Girls Club. I mean, we are serving pretty much three meals a day on a regular basis in that school. It's just inappropriate. If you've been in there, it's very, very limited.
We did some things a few years ago, but we did some kind of.
We just added some.
Some stainless steel common top renovations and such like that. It's a maintenance issue dealing with a greater issue. They really produce a lot there with limited space and.
There's no way to access the kitchen, other than through a window?
No.
From the gym, where the food is, or the multipurpose room where the food is served, other than walking outside of the gym and outside into the hallway?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yes. It limits everything.
So, I mean, this is another one that's been on our list for a long time.
What are the ADA enhancements at Grove?
Over at Grove, your acts will lie memory on.
That's okay.
It's significant. It includes washrooms.
It's washrooms, staff washrooms. There's several issues relevant to Grove on its age. And the way the building was built when it was built, to the size of those areas.
It's going to, I anticipate it showing up in our life safety.
Yes.
Yes, it will, I guarantee you. It's similar to Huff, it's similar to the dated facilities. Line is in the same category as well.
Exterior painting, beyond just summer painting, you're saying a more significant repainting?
Yes. What we're talking about is the high school, when you look at the precast concrete walls, they're starting to peel, and that's not something that my maintenance guys will do. We're talking about scaffolding the structure, you know, some type of media blasting it and recoating it, or re-cladding it. There's several ways we can go. We can take a look at that in different applications. You can skin coat it with brick veneer, you can clad it with metal applications, or we can repaint it or surface it back down and re-stain it. But we're getting to the point we need to work on that.
The high school fine performing arts center?
That has to do with the theater in general, and it's.
Vintage 1970s.
It's dated.
It's dated, and actually, for the size of the high school, it's kind of small, so there's a lot of.
It's small, it's dated, it's.
That's a big, that's a big.
It hasn't been touched in any of the renovations over the years at the high school level.
Definitely neither.
Lighting, you know, the lighting is antiquated.
All of this, the equipment, the sound and the back behind the scenes stuff.
Yeah, everything in there.
Yeah, I think most people would agree with that. Domestic hot water piping?
Welcome to the high school. You know, you have 1948 sections at the high school, and we have 1948 piping. Well, we have.
It's good, it lasted just long.
When we talk domestic hot water piping and domestic piping in general, we're talking Grove, we're talking James Street, we're talking Station, we're talking Huff, we're talking high school. We have galvanized piping. It's still out there, and I suppose if I open up a three-quarter inch line, I'll have about maybe a pencil diameter to go through it. We have hot water issues at the high school constantly. We have to start looking at more efficient ways to reduce the hot water, manage it, and start replacing the piping. We have places that I can show you have 16 pipe plants on.
Oh, yeah, right. Okay. Boiler chiller optimization?
Boiler chiller optimization is software application and boiler controls and chiller controls to reduce our operational costs. We literally.
That should be a summer thing.
Piling on, Brian.
Well, one upgrade to the chiller plant at the high school to optimize it, we're looking at almost $300,000 to do that. It does have about a five to seven-year payback in energy reduction by doing it. And our boilers are basically, we're one step away from the days that you light it with a wine, you open it up and stick a wine in it and fire the boilers. So they're a gold technology. They work great, but we can really enhance those and push controls.
Wish we were going to spend like some of coal.
Yeah, and Tom.
Something wrong with coal plants, they still work.
At our, at our meeting, if you'll indulge us, at our meeting.
The facilities committee meeting, right?
Well, that's what you guys wanted to do, I'm trying to give you the opportunity.
You're heckling.
We just spent.
At our meeting that we just had, you shared with us some detail on some boilers and some immediate actions that needed to be taken that you've run into recently.
The chiller plant that we're talking about, right now, we just had a malfunction in solid-state starter for the chiller. That minor malfunction at a minimum, if I stay with that technology, is $40,000 to replace it. To upgrade it to what we should, in the energy code requirements and everything that are now, it would be minimum $80,000 plus. And of course, we're looking at, if I do that, I'm looking at a payback in the $80,000 plus, in about three to four years in energy savings. But it's $80,000 in operation and maintenance as unexpected failure. But the equipment is aging, we have to start looking at it, and looking at bringing it up to the technology that is responsible in managing our utility bills.
Well-inseptic.
Well-inseptic, we have three buildings existing right now with well-inseptic. We have a power failure, we lose our, in that building, we lose the ability to flush toilets because it's run off of an electric well pump. At that point, in a short period of time, we're looking at having to close the building.
What building does it?
That building is North Barrington, Countryside, and Barbara Rose. There's nothing wrong with the water-inseptic system, it's used all over the place, and it works quite well, but if we lose power, it's not like the other buildings, that the water is supplied from the municipality. So what we're asking for is to go in there and put in backup generators, so that that well-inseptic, emergency backup lighting, all that is handled, so that we won't have to evacuate the building. It just happens with well-inseptic, if it goes on too long, you don't have bathrooms, they can't wash their hands, you don't have water to supply to the building.
And we have had to close Rose a couple days, I think, because of this one.
So it's a pretty critical health and safety issue. It can be, it can.
We'll segue to the Rose sewer connection.
Barbara Rose, if we went to the municipal supply sanitary piping system and water utility, we would not need the generator in that building, because it would be like your other buildings that's supplied by the municipality. And your municipality's heat backup generators to maintain those operations.
So little history on why that option is available to Rose. When the Woods of South Barrington was built, one of the things that the Village of South Barrington negotiated with them was to bring the well-inseptic, the water and sewer connection to the corner, so it would be at the southwest corner of the intersection of Penny and Bartlett, which is across the street from the school. They allowed for a certain amount of capacity within the sewer at that time, and so what we need to do if we want to take advantage of that is trench under the road, and it's never that simple, right? Because you have to have, you have to worry about all these other things too. But when we looked at that a couple of years ago, I think we were at a, was that 1.8 as well? 1.3?
I guess, it was a million. It was a million.
It was like the billion, billion, one conversation that we were having on that.
And that's a project that we could do over probably two or three years, because it takes that long to get permits and work with the government agencies involved. But it takes a commitment on behalf of the board to follow through and do it, because once you start the ball rolling, you have to finish.
And if we do do that, you make a commitment that your septic system is shut down. So if we get the permit and we file the agreement, we have just set a time clock in place that we have to turn off our septic and shut down our well. So that's one of those things, you just, if you're going to do it and you file for the permits, we have to, we have to follow through with that, otherwise we wind up in violation.
And some of us feel like there might, there's some time sensitivity around taking advantage of this option.
You have other residential areas in that area vying for that utility capacity, and I also know, I believe it's Barrington Hills is really anxious that there's any way they can tap into that utility over there.
There's only so much capacity in the, in the system there, and they've allowed for us, but not sure how long it's going to be available.
North Barrington Parking?
That has to do with our asset of 566 Miller Road property. That property exits onto Miller Road and Route 59, and those people from North Barrington know there's a traffic light there. We're at Grandview in front of the school. If you exit onto Route 59, which is the only way to get off of Grandview and get out of the school, you exit onto Route 59 that has no traffic light. So one of the reasons that property, five-plus acres, was purchased was to connect the west parking lot to that property and allow buses and parents to exit onto Miller Road, be able to use the traffic light, they have a much safer way to access Route 59 and move back and forth there. And part of that would be too, is to enhance the parking facility. While we're doing it, we might as well open it up a little bit more and extend the parking capacity.
Which is an issue on that site.
Especially since that site has no, there's very little roads around there, so parking on the street becomes a major issue.
It's very limited.
Limited and messy. And then you've got a bunch of educational initiatives, which are kind of, you can almost summarize it as kind of 21st century learning space issues.
That's correct. And we didn't, these are just conversational pieces, you know, educationally. And we, one other facility enhancement, or this major facility issue I want to discuss is James Street.
Okay. Yeah, it didn't make the list.
Well, it's over on the other side.
It's an asset, yes, because it's an asset, valuable asset.
And I know the board is somewhat aware of this. It is obviously the most, you know, inappropriate facility we have in the district. It is, it is a very low-functioning facility. You know, last year, we went out to bid for windows. The windows, when the bids came back, the facilities committee did, you know, we had a discussion, I believe, at the board table. The window replacement for that site's about a third of the cost of, you know, I mean, estimated value of the site. It's not even worth replacing the windows on that site. The roof has a lifespan of.
The roof could be brilliant, I think about that roof. That roof is the oldest existing single membrane roof in Firestone's history. They're begging you ever to replace it, so they can see how long it will go. It's possible.
Who's going to come out of this?
Exactly.
Why, why, monitoring themselves?
Yeah, they will. It's about eight to nine years out of its expected life. So we monitor regularly, but as I said in the facilities committee tonight, that one is going to get what they call a renovation. We'll put a coating on top of it, I think it's about five more years, and then we're going to tear it off. That's about a quarter million to 280,000. That's about a quarter million to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to re-rope that roof.
That particular facility has, it is a problem. And it's a problem for all the employees that work in that building. It has multiple issues. The HVAC is sporadic at best, correct, Tom? Is that a fair way to say it?
Unfortunately, the building was designed for a certain purpose and it has been manipulated for its purpose now without renovating the HVAC system. We have the original air hammer in there and it is not designed properly to handle that building effectively. So, and then plus, that's a building we could go down and we could probably come down about sixteen pipe clamps to hold back leaks on one pipeline when that goes-
One water feet to the whole site.
Yeah.
It's in the ceiling and not good.
It's not a long-term building.
I would hope not. So my, you know, it's certainly a conversation that has to be discussed and, you know, and strategies. There are different strategies on what to do there, but it is a pressing issue along with a few other of the items that we've discussed.
How are our mobile classrooms doing?
Condition-wise, you said?
Here.
Condition, they're in very good condition. They're coming up under ten years and when that mobile was built, they put a ten year number ring roof on it. So those roofs are coming new, I'm probably going to replace those roofs this coming summer or they recommend replacing those roofs. Condition-wise, we're expecting a few years, they are in good condition, but again, they are a mobile numbered facility.
Can we get, I mean, can we get another five, another ten years out of them?
Yes. We have to maintain them and there will be costs to doing that, yes. Those were high quality mobiles, not a-
And we've done some preventative maintenance on those. The carpeting has all been ripped out, there's VCT flooring in there. The roof renovation, I just pulled it up, about fifty thousand each school.
So, you know, but understand those were designed to be temporary, so there's things in there that are going to start to come due, the HVAC packs that are on the walls, that type of stuff. We've already done siding repairs to those structures. We just, we stay at them.
The heating and cooling units too, they have a short-term life.
Yes. You know, those are, they're like gigantic window breakers are what they are. And they're not designed as a fifty-year building. But we can say, Adam, that you just have to throw them on, Adam, and keep them going.
Your district, your list of district-wide standardization, infrastructure stuff, is that something that you're just going to, I mean, little bit, I mean, just on an annual basis or are there really some big boulders here there?
There are. We can take a look at several of these items. Wireless networking, that's not mine, that looking bad. VoIP, voice over IP, the less than telephone systems. Another discussion, fire alarm system, security alarm system. If we paint Prairie, when we built ELC, we upgraded the master fire alarm panel. But Prairie's fire alarm system is original, the ancillary devices, those devices are what they call non-addressable. We want to upgrade them to what's called addressable. And addressable means when the fire alarm goes off, that smoke detector says it's me at the panel and tells us where it's at. Right now, it says, in this wing, I'm going off and we got to go hunting. So it works, it's serviced, and it's certified every year. It is not the best way to go. So what we're looking to do is standardize these units and also later integrate them into our advanced automation system. So if I have a fire alarm go off, it literally will send me an email text on my phone and tell me the fire alarm went off, the intrusion detection system went off, where it's at, what was the device, what happened. And I can go, well, yeah, an intrusion, I got a motion detector went off in the building, but none of my perimeter doors went off and nothing else went off, it's probably a malfunction. But you're talking about integrating those all into the automation system so we have a clearer picture on a remote application and we can really have a better response to that to these, these systems. Security cameras, we've already started. It's just enhanced. And if you look at the high school, that system is analog-based cameras, which were moving to IP or digital cameras, high definition, better recognition from the pictures. And the high school's one hundred and ninety-eight cameras, just to give you a number. So if we renovate that, that's going to be a very significant impact. And when we go to the IP, there's a good chance that we're going to have to make a sub network to operate those cameras because it will be so intense that the security guard are already handling with Russ in the IP department.
If I could just point out something in the educational initiatives, you'll notice long-term full-day kindergarten is there. Just to remind everyone, one of the reasons that we're able to have full-day kindergarten right now is because we have space. And it, it wouldn't take a very large uptick in enrollment to make that a challenge. And so that's something we need to keep in the back of our minds, how, and that the community can have input on. How important is it, is it to the community to have a full-day kindergarten? And what modifications, if any, might need to be made to our buildings to sustain that long-term and make that a permanent part of our program?
Correct. I think elementary classroom space fits into that same bucket. I mean, that could change what-
You talked about the mobiles, right? But is it still, I mean, I'll ask the question to the administration first, do you still think we need a third miniscule or a fourth miniscule? More than two miniscules?
Long-term, yes. I mean, you've still got significant amount of classrooms at both schools in temporary units. And that's how it's working. And it's how it's worked. And we're, we're full at all those, both those schools. So, you know, especially monitoring enrollment. I mean, if you, if we see an uptick, it won't be too long before the answer's definitely yes, and when are we going to do it, right? So I think that's always something to think about. And how long do those temporary units serve our purpose? That's another piece of that. I know that was years ago, ten years ago, it was about ten?
Yeah.
Where there was a, the community had the question and it didn't happen and that's why when we put up the mobile units.
So can I make a quick comment? I think that as we went, we went line item by line item down this list, I think if we demonstrated anything, you know, coming, this, a lot of this came from the facilities committee. We demonstrated that none of these are frivolous, none of these really look like something that, you know, was just, oh, that, they would be nice list. Most of these are essential items. So, I mean, I hope that at some point soon, if not tonight, we can talk about the money piece of this because the big concern that I have is somebody that has had a direct effect on not only generating the list, but trying to figure out at a more microscopic level where the two point two to two point five million that we've had and then sometimes one point five million because we were paying back previous expenses, you know, where that was going to go. The reality is moving forward, if we're going to try to tackle this list, we need to have a better plan. Because I'm not feeling like we're going to get through that by limping. I don't feel like I can limp through, because a lot of those are five hundred thousand plus, a lot of those.
And you kept asking, could you do it in smaller projects? Maybe, well, in all, in all seriousness, some of them we could, but we probably couldn't do two.
Right.
That would be hard.
Well, another list that wasn't scaled study that we keep looking at year after year too at facilities, you know, the one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, umptons too.
I didn't want to, I want to back to Joe's point. And I know, I know they're not frivolous, I think you're right, that was the value of going through it. But I want to also underscore, I want to make sure, are all of the, the building principles that are associated with these different projects, do they all see this as high priority?
They're included in all conversations on capital planning. They, they come into the discussions, you know, some have reached the point they understand that they're not, you know, they've been talking about it for a long period of time. They, they leave it on the list, but they, they understand that-
Some of them, this last year, we've changed from a priority number to an asterisk because we know we continue to talk about these, to bump them back again.
I'm looking at this list, Brian, there isn't anything on this list that I, I have not had a conversation with the building level, principal on every one of those issues in that, in that upper left button. I have, I mean, I've had conversations with them, not just at the facility level, but-
So, so look, the realities are, I mean, we all look at our budget. Our operating budget is tight. We expect it to get tighter, right? We're all worried about it. We get that two million dollar plus that we got, we use DCEB, right? There's not a whole lot, I mean, unless, I guess, you know, we could choose like we did with the, when we built this building, right, to go out longer with DCEB. That worries me, honestly. I mean, we could always talk about that, but I'd have to be convinced with it. I don't think we can go out, I don't think this is an environment to go out for a capital referendum yet.
Not yet.
So our options are kind of limited.
Yep.
Right? But I do think we got to have a plan, you know. I mean, one, I'd like to see with some of these numbers so we can start chunking it out, although-
Well, that's part of the next steps. I mean, that's part of the direction I would like to have, you know. We don't want to spend a huge amount of time and effort with our architects and staff unless the board has, you know, directs us to do it.
I think ultimately, the answer has to come from an operating rate or a capital referendum. It has to. I don't know where else it's going to come from.
I agree.
And I don't think that can happen, going back to the earlier chart, until 2021.
Well-
Unless we choose to do it earlier.
Let's just- Start to communicate and socialize it though, right?
Right.
It'd be interesting to see like a plan that said we can do X number of lumpy projects, you know, five to eight hundred K in the next five years, we can do X number of them and all of these fit in, these ten qualifies one of those, right? And that means that we're only going to do one a year, so that means that there's ten of them that only five of them are going to get done and some of them won't even fit into that category, right? So until we get those numbers against each one and be able to see and visualize it, it's going to be hard to see what's not going to get done. Does that make sense?
There's a really important part of this as well though, is that, you know, we can talk about what does a renovation at Huff Street cost? We give that cost. Well, we can't give you that. If we were to do that, let's just say one here, just as an example, that's this price. What we've done at that point, which we can't give a price on, is what the cost of deferring maintenance on all the other buildings would be because we're going to do one project and then what deferring some of these larger projects would look like down the road. So if we continue to just do them and look at it purely on a capital standpoint, President Battle, to your point, maybe we can do that in a year. Yes, we can, but we will not address any of the other issues at other schools and that deferred maintenance will have that cost. I think that's an important part of this.
And that's part of the balancing out. When I said, when I was saying we could do it in one year, I'm thinking the only way you're going to do a big lump like that in one year is if you're going to spread the payment out over three years.
Correct.
Right? So that you're still doing other stuff. Because we can't just do one project in a summer.
In that, in that event though, if I can comment to that, so let's, Wendy, to your point, if we were to break up the Huff project over two years, obviously there would be an increased cost with everybody touching ahead of it, people coming back to the project this second year, there are some certain things we can't give up, roofing, pavement replacement. But in that example, that's seven hundred thousand dollars, so not breaking it up into two years in this example looks good, except that you've now deferred maintenance another year and compounded it because there's certain things we have to do every year.
No, but I think what-
I hope that makes sense.
But I think what Brian is saying is, I don't think he has the appetite for doing it over two years either. He's talking about how we're going to pay for it. The pay structure piece, I think, is more manageable if we don't disrupt the school for too long. I don't think any of us feel that comfortable with them doing part of the project, messing up part of the school, then going back and messing things up again. And, you know, ideally, it would be nice to have that contained and then we would figure out the funding piece over multiple years, right? Is that what, is that what you implied before? We've done that on other projects before where we've taken a certain amount of money per year until we have paid back. So you're kind of right in that instead of our budget being two point five consistently, it might be, you know, two point one because we're taking four hundred, four hundred, four hundred multiple years in a row to pay back what we overspent on the one year where we actually did the project. But I think with the way we would do facilities, we can manage it. The problem is, we can't do that for that many. There's only so many of those big hits that we can take because you can't, we don't have that big of a budget.
So one of the things that I was thinking that we could do, and I know I brought this up, I think at finance before, is be really mindful of deadlines that we will have in place, get them from our auditors with any excess funds we have from any particular year. There was one year we had two million dollars or something like that and we decided that the best place to give us the most flexibility to put that money, rather than put it in the fund balance where it just sort of gets locked there, unless you were to deficit spend to use it or make a conscious effort, is to put it in capital projects. Because then, if we decide not to do DCEB or if we have a situation like this where we need more than our two and a half million dollars, we have some flexibility in order to utilize that money and we utilize that for the station locker room. That's what we did. And so, I mean, Tim was sharing with us that he's been dealing with the auditors refining numbers based on last fiscal year and that that might give us a jumpstart on doing one of the bigger projects.
For instance, if our, if our end of year after our audit, let's just say it's a million dollars, so what you're saying is take that million dollars, put it in-
Put it in capital projects.
And then we use it whenever the project, whatever it is, is ready to go.
We have the flexibility, right?
That's correct.
To use it on some of this stuff.
Right.
Instead of putting it in the fund balance.
Right. And maybe we would say, you know, there'd be certain projects we'd be willing to do that on and others, no, we don't want, we need to save that for, for a rainy day because we know there's going to be an emergency.
But here's what I would say, when I look at this list, and we could probably all say some of these we think are high priorities and some may be lower from our own lens, right? But I think we would all look at this list and say, our appetite for capital projects is much greater than what our budget's going to be. So I'd move any money over there regardless of the project because our appetite for important projects is really high.
Well, I would agree with you, but I don't want to make that assumption.
I think that's something we can talk about in the finance committee, we're meeting next week, we certainly can, you know.
Do you have some preliminary numbers from the auditor?
We do.
The, the other thing to do is, you know, we've been, I think we just got back up to that two and a half million dollar mark. We were at two and a quarter for a while and we were at two for a while. The board could always decide to increase our budget. You know, if we had-
Two seven?
Two seven. Not really. You know, but we would, the whole budget would have to be able to support that, what did you say?
You want to change the first number.
Yeah.
Not the third.
Not after the decimal point, no change.
I think Brian, I think Brian's kind of right, you know, there aren't a lot of options, so Penny bringing up a good one, you know, hopefully we can make that happen, whenever we can make that happen. It'll be hard to get five years out where it seems like there might be some relief without us trying to figure out something with these guys, the finance guys, and figure it out. Just to shore things up until we can, you know, have that.
Yeah, some of the stuff we can't keep deferred.
Well, and I know there was a request to have dollar amounts beside all of these things. Some of them, I think, are going to require, you know, if we go back to- you know, if we go back to the slide that Perkins and Will gave us about, you know, the start of our progression through looking at these projects, you know, does the community find value in having a an update, well, or an updated auditorium?
Yeah.
And what might that look like? You know, the pool deck.
The athletic.
Kindergarten space, athletic fields, exactly. So there's a lot of things on that list that it's impossible to put a price tag on right now, because you don't know the scope of the project.
I agree.
That's something I do understand.
Some we do. I mean, and Tom's really good at, I think, putting a decent estimate next to it. I'll just remind you, last year, we had some estimates that we thought were good, and when we went out to bid, they came in a lot higher. And one other thing Tom shared, I hope I'm going to quote you correctly, is that he just learned that concrete, he's been told, is probably going to go up about 25%.
Anywhere from 15 to 20 some percent is the expected after January, more than off concrete projects.
So that'll add to most of those projects.
Look, I think it should be, it should be understood with all these estimates, they're guest estimates. They're ballpark estimates, nobody, we shouldn't treat any of them as, you know.
I'm just trying to set expectations, manage expectations, they should say.
They're just planning.
I think if you take a look at this, now, this is Perkins and Will, our architect, we've used in the past for large-scale master planning. You know, if you look where we're at, we're over on the far left. We're not even in the red box yet, okay? This is just a preliminary conversation. I think going back to what Sandra said, you know, we might be able to prioritize a few, five, you know, of those projects or whatever in that upper, that first box. Outside of that, everything else which would start in a, you know, basic conversation, if the board would decide to, hey, let's engage an architect, let's go out and let's look at that, and start this process, you know, about, and, and, you know, they, they, I think you've done that here before in master facility planning, and they, you know, work with us, and they help lead that conversation. And we have a professional there, you know, company, they're a firm there, to help us walk through some of those larger scale projects. That's why, I know other districts have done that, and if that's something the board needs to consider, you know, not tonight, something to think of, you know, on that bigger scale, to consider moving forward. Now, this is an example.
It's been a long time, 20 years.
Yeah.
Since we did it from a district view. They've used the same analysis or process on an individual building. This is an example.
And that's why our debt's finally coming off. It has been 20 years since that has occurred.
Okay. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the debt, and I, I am not going to get in the weeds on this. I think we're all fatigued. This reminds me of my first year of marriage, when we went through receipts, my husband told me how much I spent at Starbucks a week. But, you know.
That chart there. They have Starbucks?
Yeah, it was about, yeah, like the sixth line down. Just kidding. So, but, you know, as far as the facilities conversation, you know, I think this is all relevant. Obviously, we have a lot of important issues that we need to address. You know, Tim, you were so kind to go through this debt services, and, you know, I'm still kind of trying to wrap my arms around this. I just have two general questions, because again, I don't have the brain capacity to go into this, like, really deep. But as far as the, you know, the bond issue to pay for capital expenditures, is that kind of a, is this a best practices that most school districts use to fund capital projects?
Do you mean DCEB?
Right, the DCEB, yeah, there's like two.
Quick answer is yes, but if not every school district has it, and it's a different amount, it's just.
Because, you know, when you see the debt coming off as a taxpayer and as a homeowner, you know, I always look at things as a mortgage, you know, no debt means less interest, less payment, more in our pockets. And, you know, when I look at this 2020 or 2021 line, you know, it looks like we'll start to have a surplus then, as far as, not, not a surplus coming in, but less going out as far as payments of, you know, $7 million. It, I don't know if that's correct or not. I don't know if you can do this, you know, exactly.
Longer, longer.
Lower the levy.
So is there, is there a discussion to be had as far as whether to take on new debt, or should our goal be to start to limit what we're paying out and kind of save that for capital projects? Or is that not the way school districts use this money to fund capital projects?
So, on the capital side, right, the money that, like, the bonds, you know, the bond debt, right? Which, which, that came off of all voter-approved referendum debt.
Okay.
And so you.
And they started a long time ago, mostly.
Right, because the only way the school district can raise capital, you know, for projects, is with a referendum.
Other than DCEB.
Other than DCEB.
And that's limited.
Right? And then you can use that in capital, you pay it out, and then the actual amount of our payment is what gets levied to the taxpayer.
Got it.
Okay? And then the DCEB borrowing, right, is subject to the board approval. Right? And you can use it actually any way you want. We use it, and most districts use it for capital that have it, but not every school district has it. It has to do with when they put the P-Tel law in effect in 1992.
Some districts don't have the capacity.
And some have a lot more.
And some of the huge.
Yeah, they do.
It's a big, it's an equity issue for a lot of school districts, right? We're using it this way, right? And so we issue it on kind of this three-year basis, right? And again, it gets into the tax levy. So the tax levy isn't fixed, it's whatever the debt, the referendum and the DCEB debt is combined. So when that number goes down, it's not like we're going to get more, it's not like we're spending less and still getting the same amount. We, the taxes will automatically go down.
I see. We're collecting less.
Yeah.
We collect less.
Yeah.
Like the mortgage, when your mortgage ends. If it ends, you don't have to make the payment.
You don't make the payment, but you don't get, it's not revenue either, right? So the taxes go down to the school district.
Okay.
That's the good part. Right? So if you are in fact going to go out and ask for another capital referendum,
It has to be.
You have to go ask the taxpayer.
You have to vote, yes.
And in my opinion, you should always have a plan, right? If you're going to go ask the taxpayers for money, it's, at some point in the future, you got to have a plan and say, this is what we're going to use the money for.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't understand this chart. I thought it was just less money going out, and this is, this additional will sit and we can.
We collect less.
But it's, the way the law is written.
Yeah, on the tab, local tax.
Which I think, and I actually think the law is written the correct way. I think it's, it's absolutely the school district's responsibility to interact with the community and say, is this needed? If it is, we're going to have to talk about how it's going to impact our taxes. And I think that's the conversation that at some point, I think, is going to need to be had in the next five to nine years.
And when you, when you put a bond out there for a referendum, the details of it are very specific, the duration, things like that.
You know, if, if a future board decides to do that, I mean, let's say, five years down the road, then the conversation is, okay, your taxes were going to go down this much, but we'd like to do projects A, B, and C, now they're only going to go down this much, you know? And that's, whatever, yeah, something like that. That's just hypothetical.
Got it.
Now, beside, we'll say, besides the extensive list that you guys have been processing in the facilities committee, though, as big a number, if not bigger, is going to be in the middle.
Sure it is.
Sure.
Right? And so if that's part of that conversation with the community, right, that's a, that's a really complicated conversation.
That's 50 million. Estimate, ballpark.
And if you, can you put the geographic map back up?
That's what it is.
So when the board had this conversation with the community last, you know, it's probably about 10 years ago, right? The solution to the middle schools, right, involved changing the grade configuration, right? So you would create four middle schools, right? And they were going to have great, they were going to put fifth graders in with the middle schools. Right? So, you know, you can see where Prairie and Station are, which are relatively centrally located, right? And then we were going to put a middle school on the Rose campus, so we were going to deal with the growth in the south part of the district. And then we bought the property up on Kelsey Road to deal with the growth north. Right? So you were going to have five, six, or five, six, and seven, eight tracks in each of those four middle schools. And then that was going to instantly free up space in the elementaries for your full-day kindergarten.
Well, because the elementaries were overcrowded, as it was at that time.
Right, right, right.
So it would, I don't know that it would have allowed for full-day kindergarten for sure.
I think it would. I do.
Be much better than we did, than a fifth-grade state.
Well, basically, you didn't form four classrooms, pretty much.
Yeah. But, but look, so the problem, I mean, the issue, that conversation with the community, and it was had, it was a hard one, right? And there wasn't a clear, really, direction from the community. Whatever is proposed for another middle school at some point in the future has to come from a product, I think, between the schools and the community, and to decide, you do a third one? What's a great, and there's really got to be a good, strong, you know, consensus on what the right thing is before you go and ask for funding for it.
And that's what that process chart shows. That's a sample of what we could do. Now, the other piece is, we have the input 220 process that we use, you know, we might, we may choose to go on, you know, after we wrap up our start time conversation, we may choose over the next two years, or whatever, to engage in a facilities conversation. If we did that, I certainly would encourage board to consider an architect to help us facilitate that. But anyway, that's a conversation for a different time. But it is something that you would need that community understanding and buy-in if you're, you are going to think about that a few years down the road.
I mean, we, you know, it's good to be, if we've really gotten a, you know, pinch, you know, we could, there are some bonding options, particularly through DCEB, where if you wanted to go out longer, you can move money forward to pay for some of these capital projects. I, I don't know that I'm in favor of that.
You also.
It is an option.
You also can issue working cash bonds, too, at which I've never, they were not at that point, but that's another critical stage you could get.
See, to me, I would probably almost reserve that in case, to me, it's like, I like having that as a fallback in case the state does something really so.
That's right. And that, that possibility is real.
That's when, to preserve the academic program, you would think, think about having to do some of that stuff.
The other thing that wasn't up there is the 10-year life safety report, which we expect probably in November or so. And hopefully, because we've been keeping up on things, there shouldn't be any, we hope there's not any big surprises there, but if you remember, you know, it's divided into three categories, and the first category you have to take care of pretty quickly. Second category, you've got a little bit more time. Third category, you have
Third category is required. Second, you have to hit them within 10, and the first is within the first couple of weeks.
So those will bump anything we've got going right now.
What's your over-under, or you think for the first five years?
We're good. We are good.
Under $500,000?
You never know. I have been talking to our architects and engineers throughout the whole process.
Crystal magic.
Ben's betting on the worst.
I hate it when the prices are good.
I've never been to Vegas and never will be, so I'm not much in the gambling. It's coming in good, actually. We did nip in the bud our compliance issues in the past, so we're looking pretty good.
Yeah. Our buildings have never been better. You've heard us say that before, but.
It's true.
It is true.
Yeah, so, and you've been supporting the board and the community, we've been able to do that.
I think what the district's done over the last 10 to 15, it's been an effective strategy. However, we're at a point here over the next few years, we have to rethink our strategy. That's really what this is about. We do. We just have to rethink it, and, and maybe embark on a new strategy, or reinforce the current, one of the two.
Okay. Well, this was a good briefing.
So next steps, last, the last thing, I'm just, I want to make sure from a staff perspective, what work, if any, do we want, would the board like to see us do, prepare for, you know, we're, I think we're scheduled for a follow-up conversation in this, maybe in February, or if I remember right.
Yeah, there's a follow-up in February.
Yeah. So, you know, I'm asking, you know, is there something very concrete, other than, you know, the facility committee, for instance? Should we try to identify what are those, I heard that suggestion?
I find myself asking the same question overboard. What do you see as our next steps? Because that's part of our process.
That's what I'm asking, because I've heard some ideas here this evening. But I, you know, would help, and especially with finance, too, as we look at, you know, our finance situation, and we have those conversations about how we might structure to be able to pay for some of these things in the short term, and then maybe talk about long-term planning down the road.
So, my thoughts is, as a board, there are some of these things we can't prioritize as a, as a governing body. It's a, it's a community thing, something, much of it is. But just like in any other situation with CapEx, the things that we can control, I think we have to prioritize. So we're going to have to get, and it's going to, it's going to be painstaking to some extent, but that list, and if there's a bigger list, you need to prioritize, prioritize all of it, and see what really has to be done, and what that timeframe realistically is between now and five years from now, or whenever the, the majority of the debt rolls off. And so to budget for CapEx over that period of time, based on those priorities, just like we would do any other way. Because if the list gets bigger, in terms of deferring what would otherwise be done as maintenance, as the other gentleman said, along with things that may be a community desire, I guess, there isn't any other way to do it than borrow money.
Okay.
I mean, you just.
In fact, you're not.
So, yeah, you're not going to be able to, to make any significant dent in this list without doing that. It's just the long and the short of it. But in the meantime, before we, I, I would personally, it's unfortunate because of timing, but in this low interest rate environment right now, good paper is selling really cheap.
It is.
You know, five years from now, it's probably not going to be the case, unfortunately.
Would you advocate thinking about going to the community earlier than five years out?
Not without a plan, I wouldn't. But if I had a, if I, I absolutely would if I had a plan, because I think even fiscally, you know, if I had a way to issue debt today at 125 basis points and pay off, you know, five or 600 basis point debt, I would do it. That I could sell, probably.
You know, when the community gives you permission, one thing the board, it kind of goes to Angela's point earlier, you can only, once you have the authority from the community, then you can stage your bond purchase out over time.
Sure.
You don't have to do it right away. Now, a lot of districts do, but you don't have to, you know, we could stage that out over, and that's something we've talked with the community about, and how that would play out as well. So, I mean, my point is, if we wanted to move before the five years, we could go out to them and say, hey, we're asking for your permission, but we're not going to, we're not going to actually purchase the bonds until we're ready, and we're going to stage it out over a period of time. I mean, that'd be part of that big picture plan. We could do that, is what I'm saying.
You wouldn't, oh, take advantage of current policies.
Right. That is true.
Brian, I guess either Brian, how far into the adaptation of blended learning should we be in the course of, you know, kind of putting together this master plan?
Now, that's a great question, because the, the educate, we didn't talk a lot about some of the educational pieces, as you know. Those go into some of our thinking, you know, especially when you're talking about classroom space, you're talking about how to utilize your current assets, you know, what's the best thinking. And that probably is going to continue to evolve here over the next year, or pretty quickly, within the next year. I think what a better understanding of that is going to have an impact on some of those longer-term conversations, no doubt about it. I wish it, you know.
Yeah, you'll, I thought, you'll have a much better idea three years from now, what you think it's going to look like, and what you'll need capitalized, and what you know now.
The scope. It really, we know we're going to need some certain things, but it's a matter of the scope. It's about how much. Or renovating our current space. Maybe that's, maybe it gets down to not adding space, maybe it gets down to renovating or refreshing our current space.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, you know, it kind of goes with the. Yeah, I mean, that's just, you know, kind of goes with the question, as far as Chris saying, if we had a plan, then it would be, but it's, it's hard to get all of these moving parts to kind of align with the time to make, you know, for all those to come together at the same time to make the plan.
And, and looking at that chart, if you, one of the things is, is part of that long-term process that you show that, it's about evaluating the educational needs, I mean, that's, that's what you're talking about, you know, that's, that's the educational needs, got to drive this conversation, has to, you know.
So that's one of the hard things, and I think it's a great point. I happen to personally be a believer that, that in the future, there will be, you'll have less buildings. If you, many of you probably did back in the 90s, you read that book by, that Gates wrote, The Road Ahead, you know, and it sounded like science fiction, then, oh, everybody be connected with these computers, and everybody will have them, and we're way past that, way, way past even where he thought we would be. And I think technology is just going to push further innovative ways to, to transfer knowledge and, I don't know, these buildings that we're sitting in, I don't know.
Like in the corporate sector, it's why office space is all over the place, because it's not needed anymore. People do it differently, and the same thing in school space, it's, it's going to definitely continue to evolve. We still are going to need some space, it's just a measure of what it looks like.
Of course.
How we use it.
Right.
But if you could, if you could shrink your total footprint, or your total square footage, you know, over time, that's obviously going to be less costly.
Right.
This and payroll, so if you have another way to deliver education, well, it's true, those are the big ones.
Those are the big levers.
Any other thoughts on next steps?
Well, what if the facilities committee, in conjunction with the administration, goes back and takes a look at that list and kind of, I, I hate to use the term prioritize, but we'll, we will sort them. We'll sort that.
Yeah.
A little bit.
If you classify them and say, these are all the same kind of projects, they're between 500 and a million dollars, you're only going to do X number of them in the next five years, but there's this many, you're not going to get them all done, then we can.
We'll try to sort them out in a way that makes them, lets you know how many we think we can actually.
You can do five of these, or you can do two, 2 million, right? What are the options?
I mean, the, the two biggest things I heard tonight, I think fall, Chris, in your category of, it really needs a conversation with the community, right, would be major renovation to the high school campus, and.
And the school space.
Right, those two, right, and, and you had some items on there around the high school and all that, I think you got to.
They fall into this.
Yeah, they fall into a much more broader, yeah, well, the performing arts and the athletic facilities and all, all that stuff with the high school.
Falls into that.
Right, that's just a big conversation about how do you rethink the high school, there's going to be a big number attached to it, and then the community says, is it worth it or not?
Middle school space is the same.
Middle school space is the same way. The other stuff, you know, is a little bit more nuts and bolts, right, which is like, you know, I, I think that's where the school district has to kind of take the lead in that conversation and say, based on our assessment of the buildings, this is what it is, right? And if, if, if it exceeds our costs, and we have to go ask them, we just say, this is what we need, and you justify it. So I think you can go through the list with that lens, and, and use Sandra's point, kind of classify it by stratospheres of 500, lots of 500,000 dollars. Okay. And then we'll, we'll get the tenure plan.
And we'll have the life safety update.
Right, and then let's kind of take a look, and, and look, you're going to have, these are just the big boulders, you got, you got other little stuff that comes up each year, right, so you're going to see of the.
Lot of panels.
We already have a full projects list.
Yeah, we have a lot of panels.
Really?
I mean, it's a high, it's a, it's a broad brush.
Okay.
That way, we have, it needs fine tuning.
So the finance committee is going to come up with the extra million, what we want for 325 for next year?
Tell, tell Chris that.
Is that what I heard?
I think the finance committee will look hard at what our options may be, maybe it is, you look at it, how to enhance our capital projects.
We won't waste them.
I think that's fair.
And I think you'll be able to, we'll talk at the finance committee meeting, is it next Tuesday, 7:30, is that what I heard?
Yeah.
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM.
You'll talk about some of the preliminary auditor numbers, and, okay.
Yep.
And maybe that gives us some flexibility for next year that we can think about. Okay.
So we will bring those things back at the, the follow-up in the February committee hall meeting, and then I, I think, you know, something for the board to think about is everything we talked about here is, this type of, what's this going to look like moving forward, whether it's an input 220, is a, you know, do we engage, drop an R, you know, queue in a, for an architect to help us with that, you know, all those bigger pictures, that's longer term, but it is something we have to think about if we're going to move forward with that.
Okay, good. Any other thoughts? Anything anybody wants to talk about?
Thank you for your attention tonight, tough conversation, but it's a good one, it's one we, you know, we're out in front here, it's a good thing, it's not urgent, but definitely needed.
I have, I have two very non-related things if we're moving off this topic.
Yeah, we're getting ready to adjourn, so this is miscellaneous.
Okay, two miscellaneous items, just wanted to make sure the board was aware that this Thursday, there's an additional input 220 meeting that's been added, the benchmarking committee is going to make their presentation, and I was asked by the high school PTO and their parenting points committee, which is formerly the morning line committee, the first in their series this year of events is going to be held on Tuesday, October 13th, 7 PM, I believe, in the auditorium. They're bringing in an author, and she wrote the book, How to Raise an Adult, Break Free of the Over-Parenting Trap and Prepare Your Kids for Success. I would say that no matter how old your child is, this is a good book, and so, it's free, they're asking for RSVP, I think, just so they can know how many people to expect. If you go to the Barrington High School PTO website and scroll down, there's a little RSVP there, they don't ask you to put down a credit card or anything, it's free, so I'd encourage everyone to attend if, if they can.
Penny, my husband bought me that book for my birthday, and he didn't even know that it was something that had to do with the district.
So have you read it?
It was a gentle hint, I believe.
So have you been able to, to read much of it?
I had it sitting there, my daughter was like, is this how I should raise you? It says, like, how to raise an adult.
Oh, that's very good.
It's, it's a very interesting cover.
It, yeah, yeah.
So.
And I heard the speakers for homecoming, the alumni speakers.
They were very good.
Did anybody else get a chance to go to that?
When we were talking about the auditorium earlier, one of the things that Dr. Laura Lopez said was, you know, you know, one of the questions was, well, as you look around the building, you know, a lot of things must have changed, and she goes, not this room.
The auditorium.
She even commented about the quality of the seats, she goes, you're, all those squeaky seats, and personally, mine was pitching forward, and, you know.
She did say that.
She did say that.
We need to do a survey of the quality of surrounding districts and.
You know.
Quickly find.
The interesting thing, you know, we always talk about how great teachers sometimes go unnoticed, and the impact that they make on kids, and both of the, both of the guests spoke about the impact of our favorite Dr. Jim Hicks, famed physics teacher at the high school, and Dale Griffith, who was an English teacher at the high school as well.
Department chair.
Yep, and, so, you know, they both had great fond memories of them, and shared the impact that they had made on their lives, and how, how they were helpful in making the decision to do what they ended up doing, so, it was very interesting.
Anything else? Third motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? We are adjourned? Do you want to lift a cup to look?
No.
Aw, come on!